Testing one, two, three. This will be the November 6th, 2013 City Council meeting with the Board interviews at 6:45, followed by the regular meeting.
Good evening. I'd like to call to order a City Council workshop for Interview Board applicant, November 6th, 2013, approximately 6:45. And our applicant this evening is Ken Farson. Ken, you please come to the chair there, and I think you'll probably have to pull that mic up close to you. Welcome.
Thank you.
Who would like to start?
Let's start by having him tell us about himself.
Please.
I'm a recent retiree from Harris, worked there for 42 years. I first moved to Satellite Beach in 1968, and lived on Park Avenue for a couple of years. Moved back to Satellite in 1990, and both kids are Satellite High grads, classes of 92, 94. And our son and his wife have just moved to Satellite Beach, so our two granddaughters are here. And I had been asked to do some board work perhaps in the past, but my travels with Harris kept me gone most of the time, so now I don't have any excuse. I'm retired, be happy to serve the city. I enjoy this city, and like I say, our kids have moved back here, too, and think it's a great place.
Thank you very much.
You're great. You selected the Board of Adjustment. Would you tell us why you picked that board?
Just interested in making sure that, you know, the standards are held for the city, so try to make sure that ordinances are kept and deviations are studied and looked at. And so I have an interest in that, and engineering background as well.
And do you have the time availability now to attend regularly? They only meet once a month, but we're looking for folks who will be able to make the meetings that they are assigned to.
Yes, I should be. I understand they meet the first Monday of every month. That's an open Monday for me. My wife and I travel a fair amount, but I can schedule around that, I think.
Okay.
Sure.
How are you?
Good.
Real quick question. Are you aware that the Board of Adjustment is a quasi-judicial board?
Well, I know that's in the language. I don't know exactly what all that means.
So, okay, so you don't know the difference between a quasi-judicial board and an advisory board?
Well, I assume that a quasi-judicial board has a little more weight.
You got it.
Any other questions?
I've known Ken for a long time. He's been a good citizen of Satellite Beach, and I think he makes a nice addition to the board, so I don't have any questions, and I'm glad you're out here doing this, Ken. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Mark.
I would just clarify, Ken. A quasi-judicial board is basically a board that is more or less judging the jury there, making a judgment call that basically is the final word on whatever that particular issue is. But generally, won't come to counsel after it goes through a quasi-judicial board, so... But anyway, I'm glad that you're volunteering. I appreciate you stepping up. I know you've wanted to get involved for a while, and you've been involved with the church, and I'm really glad to have you here.
Thank you.
I've known Ken for...since he's moved here, and I appreciate you stepping forward and wanting to donate your time to the city. I have really no questions, Ken, unless you have anything else for us.
No.
That's it, thank you. And how it works is we will make the appointments at the end of the meeting tonight, maybe tomorrow, but depending on how long the meeting lasts tonight, it's our...it's down in the agenda items towards the end. Okay? Thank you.
Okay.
Any further business?
No, sir.
During boards? Okay, meetings adjourned. Will we convene at 7:00? Good evening. I'd like to call to order the City Council regular meeting, November 6th, 2013, 7:00 PM. Will you please join Councilman Gott for a moment of silence and a pledge?
Please join me in a moment of silence. Now the pledge.
(Inaudible) United States of America, and each republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Three, Citizens' Comments. We have a very long agenda tonight. Normally, I do not impose the time limit, try to keep it open as much as possible tonight because I know there's items on this agenda that are passionate to a lot of people. I ask for your courtesy to people's opinions and views while they're up speaking, and we will limit the citizens' comments to five minutes and general comments on agenda items to three. Okay? At this time, I'll open up for citizens' comments on non-agenda item, please. Okay, thank you, closed. Moving on to Agenda Item Four, City Council Comments. Who'd like to start?
Just a few things. I did attend the FRA conference last week. Very informative conference. I was only able to attend two days and with a three. Also, attended the Founder's Day Parade. I wasn't able to stay for the events afterwards. I did attend a few of the youth football playoffs. Unfortunately, none of our teams made it to the...advance to the next round. And I also attended the BFRW Veterans Military Fundraiser, which was quite a spectacular event. They raised quite a bit of money for veterans Saturday evening. That's it.
Thank you.
I also attended the FRA conference, and the seminars were really informative. You know, once again, they put on a great conference, and the seminars are generally topics that CRAs, you know, deal with, so it was a pretty good conference. I also attended the Founder's Day Parade, and I want to commend the Recreation Department for...and the Satellite Beach Women's Club for putting on a wonderful event again. I know the Lions Club was involved in it, and, you know, it's just Founder's Day was pretty packed this year, and I hope you all did as well as you have done in the past. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mark.
I also attended the Founder's Day Parade, and it was an excellent event. The only thing that Dom left out is I'd also like to thank the Police and Fire Department for their participation in the process, and Allen Potter as well, and his group for putting everything together. It was very well done this year, very well attended. I think that's the most filled I've ever seen that parking lot up there. It was really incredible to see the turnout. So, thank you, everyone, for being there, and that's all I have. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. I also attended Founder's Day, and thank you to all the departments and the Women's Club for the hard work, as they always do. I also attended Holland Celebration of America yesterday with the kids. Did a really great job. It was fun. Also went out to the Space Center with the Economic Development Council, and I want to tell you, if you have not been out there to see the shuttle and the thing, it's pretty amazing. If you haven't had the opportunity to get that close, it's an amazing thing, and take the opportunity to do it. On a Saturday note, Phyllis Wood, a longtime resident of the city, has donated hours and hours to this city. Her services are Friday, 11 o'clock, I believe, the United Methodist Church, at 11 o'clock. And, oh, one other thing, cell phones, please, pack night, so if you have a cellphone, please double-check and make sure it is turned off. And that's...no more comments on it from me. City Attorney's Report.
I have nothing.
Thank you. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to congratulate the Recreation Department, as well as all of our other staff members that assisted with the Founder's Day, as well as the Women's Club. It was a great event. It was my first parade that I walked in. I thought I would get tired, but it was invigorating seeing all those people on the sidelines, so it was...it was a fun event. My daughter loved throwing candy out at people. And I'd also like to thank the Sherwood residents this year for their Halloween contributions. I don't know if you've been able to bring your kids out to Sherwood every Halloween, but it is packed, full of people. And I have a number of friends that live on that street, and they spend an enormous amount of money on candy to basically create a beautiful Satellite Beach hometown event that really has nothing to do with the city. All we do is let it happen, and it was real...it's really neat to see what they do. They...all of them decorate their houses. It's just...it's incredible. So I just wanted to send a thank you to them and recognize them for what they do. I want to let everyone know that the Ocean Reef Beach...Ocean Reef Festival is going to be on December 7th, so mark your calendars for that. And then also, December 8th is our Fire Department and Community Open House and Christmas Party. So you're welcome to stop by the Fire Department on that day and, you know, visit with all the firefighters and tour the facility. Also, we have the Fire...speaking of the Fire Department, their movie night is actually on November 9th, and they're moving that...moving the movie night to the DRS Center because of the weather. So that'll start at dusk, so if your children are interested in that, please, please go to the DRS Center for that event. And also, a lot of you get these announcements on our Facebook...on my City Manager Facebook page. We have now 177 likes. The Fire Department has a paltry 144, so, sorry.
Same one.
You know, I love a challenge. But also, we did have our A-1A meetings. We have the A-1A concept plan just being designed right now, and we're going through all of our workshops to get the community input on that, and we had our first large meeting, and then our...this past Tuesday, we had our first public workshop focusing on one segment of the road. In our first large meeting, we had approximately about 60 people attend, which is very good turnout for this size community, in my experience. And then also, we had about...probably about 20 attend the focus groups. So we got some great input. There are four more meetings after the one we had yesterday, so please, get on our website. Our...the meeting days are every Tuesday, basically, from now on, and it's at our Civic Center at 7:00. So please attend that if you can. The...I'd like to announce that, you know, what...the whole leadership team in the city now is just focused on cutting costs, and we have been able to save another $30,000 with moving our retirees to a Medicare Advantage Plan through Health First as a separate group. So not only do we have the retirees off of our experience, our claims experience now with the employee plan, but now they're...they're able to get a cheaper plan that's cheaper for them, as well as us, and it's saving us $30,000 on annual premiums. So I'd like to thank the mayor's wife for the idea, and also our staff, Annie Stewart and Florence Ford, for basically following through with that and getting that done so quickly. We've had a lot of changes in our healthcare plans lately, and it's been a little crazy for us, and for them to be able to continue to revise things to save money during this time is exceptional, and I'd like to highlight that and thank them. We have Help Restore Oysters reefs in the Indian River Lagoon. Basically, our oyster mat-making workshops at the DRS Center, which will be overseen by the Brevard Zoo. So this is a partnership with...between the city and Brevard Zoo. We're making the space, and they're bringing in the items needed. And if you'd like to volunteer for that, the information is in this report, and we'll be highlighting that on the Facebook pages. But basically, you can volunteer and come in to the DRS Center and help us make those oyster mats, which will be added to our lagoon to assist in cleaning up some of the pollution. In my report, you'll see a Space Coast League of Cities memorandum of understanding, which is kind of like a feel-good thing that the League is doing to partner with the Brazilian Chamber of Commerce, or the Brazil Space Coast International Development Agency, and the Brazil Florida Chamber of Commerce, which is basically an investment group that's coming into the Florida Space Coast, and there's a lot of...a lot's happening in Melbourne and Titusville. I'm not real sure this is going to do a lot for us, but it provides, you know, we're in the spirit of cooperation. I'd just like to get your concurrence, to go ahead and sign the memorandum of understanding and be their partner.
On the action item, discussion from council?
You know, I think this is a real positive thing, because if, you know, if you look at Embrer coming in, there's other Brazilian companies coming in, and these are high-tech companies that are coming into Brevard County, and their employees are going to live somewhere, and they're going to look for places that are quality-of-like municipalities, and, you know, that's kind of us. So, you know, while we may not benefit anything financially, we may find new residents that are coming into our city that are employees of these companies coming in. So, you know, I'm very much in favor of this, and I know that...I know that they are interested in Brevard County, not just Embrer, but there are several other companies that are coming in, so, you know, I think we should do this.
Thank you. Any further comments from council?
I was at the Space Coast League meeting where this was discussed, and I echo Dom's comments. I think it would be a good thing for us to participate in this, Mayor.
Thank you. Because it's an action item, I will open it up for public comment.
Steve Headley, resident. I'm against this. Surprise. And I realize that I'm tilting against windmills here. I understand that. Currently, the United States sends $80 billion a year to Brazil. That money, for the vast majority, gets turned into money to go to the ag-sugar groups down there, which turn around and become our competitors in Florida's sugar market. A $700 million endeavor. So we are actually sending money down to compete against ourselves. In 2005, after elections that involved literally voter fraud, stealing votes, paying for votes, child kidnapping to ensure votes, in 2009, the courts down there convicted some people on this. Nothing has come of it because their Supreme Court has decided in another part of corruption of the government of Brazil that the conviction should be overturned. 62% of the Brazilian GDP goes to social programs, but because they are so corrupt, there is no benefit to the people in Brazil at all. Brazil has one of the lowest per capita wealth in...not only in South America, but in the Western Hemisphere. The Brazilian government is going to use any technology, any money that we trade with them or use with them, to further be corrupt, and I have a severe problem with us lying down with dogs and not getting up with fleas. I understand Councilman Montanaro's point about maybe some people moving up here, but I come from a town that at one point in time had a similar agreement with a town in the former Union of Soviet Socialist Republic. We traded technology. We traded people until it stopped. It just stopped, and no one speaks of it anymore because we happen to be trading with Chernobyl. I kid you not, we traded technology with Chernobyl. And my point is that if we're not getting anything from this, if we're not having a direct economic advantage from this, we should not be sending or participating in our technology going south, their technology coming north, because they don't have a whole lot of technology, and no one benefits except for some corrupt politicians. And I'm sorry I disagree with this.
Thank you very much, Steve. Any further public comment before we close it? Close public comment. Bring it back to council. Council?
Big consensus, right?
Consensus?
And I just had one more item, Mayor. The Veterans Memorial Center on Manon Island is supporting Brevard's largest veteran salute at 9:00 AM Friday, November 8th, at the King Center for the Performing Arts in Melbourne. And this is...there's a number of things going on, but including patriotic preludes, Melbourne Municipal Band, Color Guard, historic flag displays, service booths, and so on. I've left the whole description of these...of this event and some flyers on the table back there if you're interested, but the admission, parking, and courtesy door-to-door shuttle are all free for that, so if you are interested in that, please check that out on the table back in the back.
Thank you. Excuse me, before I go on to Agenda Number Seven, I forgot one thing. The Satellite High Football Booster Club has a fundraiser going to make handicap accessible ramps to the bleachers. They're selling bricks with names on it, and if it's anything you might be interested in, you know, please contact Satellite High or the Booster Club. They've got a nice little project going and need your support. Okay, moving on to Agenda Number Seven, Presentation of the Proclamation Recognizing November 11th, 2013 as Veterans' Day and a National Day of Service and Remembrance. We have Commander Jim Campbell here, and before we get going, I'd like...what I've asked is Councilman Gott, who is a veteran, to read the proclamation, and will all the veterans in the room please stand up while she reads the proclamation.
Colonel Paul Eckes out there. Come on in here, Colonel.
And Jim is right here.
This is for you, too, so please stand with us.
Thank you, dear.
Whereas, November 11th is dedicated to the extraordinary Americans who have worn the uniform of the United States Armed Forces. On this day, we come together to pay tribute to America's sons and daughters for their service and sacrifice. And whereas our veterans have preserved our way of life with unwavering patriotism and quiet courage, they have charged into harm's way, sometimes making the ultimate sacrifice to protect the freedoms that have blessed America. And whereas, long after leaving the uniform behind, many veterans continue to serve our country and communities from coast to coast as public servants and mentors, parents and community leaders. They have added proud chapters to the history of America. And whereas our actions must strengthen the bond between our nation and her warriors who protected our freedom in years past and who protect it today, and whereas, with respect and recognition of the contributions our servicemen and women have made to the cause of peace and freedom around the world, we must fulfill our sacred trust to care for our veterans. And whereas Congress has approved and requests that we observe November 11th as Veterans' Day and a National Day of Service and Remembrance. Now therefore, I, Frank P. Catino, Mayor of the City of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, do hereby proclaim November 11th, 2013, as Veterans' Day and a National Day of Service and Remembrance. I encourage our community to join together to recognize the valor and sacrifice of our veterans through ceremonies and prayers, and to pay tribute to the many heroes who protect and defend our great nation, and witness whereof I hereby sign this proclamation and cause the seal of the City of Satellite Beach to be affixed this sixth day of November 2013, and it's signed Frank P. Catino, Mayor.
Move on to Agenda Item Number Eight, Discuss Take Action on a Small-Scale Amendment Number 2013-1 for rezoning the property located at 1753 through 1773 Highway A-1A. Jim?
Ordinance Number 1078, excuse me. An ordinance of the City of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, amending the City of Satellite Beach 1998 Comprehensive Plan as amended by revising the future land use map on a certain tract of land, more particularly described herein from residential high-density to commercial and services, providing for inclusion of ordinance and revised future land use map in the Comprehensive Plan, providing an effective date. It's the first reading of ordinance Number 1078.
Thank you. Courtney?
Thank you. Most of you or all of you are familiar with this. This is the Sun on the Beach property. We have brought this to you for basically permission to file this application on behalf of the property owner, so the property owner could avoid the fees in having to come to public hearings on behalf of the application. And basically, what we're trying to do is correct a past mistake and change the property from residential land use and zoning to a commercial land use and zoning. So that's pretty much it. The staff report's pretty detailed because it's a land use amendment. It has to be sent up to the state, so there's a concurrency analysis and so on, so that's why you see a large agenda packet, but it's a pretty simple item. There are no concurrency issues, and it's pretty straightforward.
Thank you very much. Council comments? I'll make a motion to pass.
Before you do that...
All right.
Ordinance 1078, the last whereas needs to come out. Make any sense being in there.
Okay, I'll make a motion to pass. Adopt ordinance Number 1078 on first reading with changes outlined by Councilman Gott.
Second.
We have a motion by Vice Mayor Brymer, second by Councilman Gott. Any further discussion from council? Here are none. Open it up, this agenda item or this portion of the agenda item on ordinance Number 1078 for public comment. Here are none. Bring it back to council. Lenore?
Councilwoman Dean?
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gott?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Brymer?
Yes.
Yes. Motion, ordinance carries five, nothing. Moving on to ordinance Number 1079.
Ordinance Number 1079, an ordinance of the City of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, amending the official zoning map to change the designation from residential mixed-use to Arm III to commercial C for property located at 1753 to 1773 Highway A-1A, described as a galley by the sea in Block E, lots 1, 2, 3, 4, 21, 22, 23, and 24, directing the city clerk to make changes to the city's official zoning map, providing an effective date. It's the first reading of ordinance Number 1079.
Move to adopt on first reading.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Gott, second by Councilman Montanaro. Any discussion from council? Here are none. Open ordinance Number 1079 for public comment. Here are none. Bring it back to council. Lenore?
Councilwoman Dean?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Brymer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montanaro?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gott?
Yes.
Eric Dean?
Yes, ordinance passes five, nothing. Moving on to Agenda Number Nine, Discuss Take Action on Beach Renourishment to the Easement and the Supplement Agreement with Brevard County. Allen?
Before you is the beach renur...the easement to allow beach renourishment on city properties. The County Commission has approved the supplemental agreement that will allow, basically bypass the county for permitting purposes, allow the city to...and go through FDEP to approve any construction on the beach if folks need to replace their crossovers or if they want to put new crossovers in. Mike McGary from the county is here if you have any questions regarding the easement.
Thank you. Bring back to council. Council comments?
I have a question.
Okay.
I know that we own approximately 40% of the beachfront property, but the CRA owns a portion of it. Will they have to enter into a separate agreement?
I don't...I don't...
I don't think the CRA owns it.
We've had title searches down on the property, and as I understand it, the city...Mike McGary with Brevard County, Florida, the city owns the oceanfront property, as I understand it, so the owner has to sign the easement.
Thank you, Mark.
I'll double-check that for you.
I think it's, you know, sunrise. I think the CRA owns that property, so they might have to enter into agreement.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. I'm saying that the city...the CRA owns part of the beachfront property, so they will have to enter into a separate... so they will have to enter into a separate agreement with the county.
I'm not, I'll have to look at Dick's, send it that property line, but I'll look at Dick's.
Any further comments from Councilwoman Deanan? Other council comments? Okay. Councilwoman Gott? Is it time, let me open it up for public comment?
Roger Goodis, resident, Satellite Beach. In the last meeting, the prior council meeting, this was brought up to the agenda, and I believe it was tabled. And there are residents concerned of unintended consequences. I believe the council packet came out on the Internet for citizens roughly around, oh, Friday night. And this has been an issue going on since last January, or thereabouts approximately. And what some residents and property owners on the beach are concerned about is that there's an addendum to this agreement, and there may or may not be unintended consequences. But what a major concern is, if this is going to pass tonight, so it goes, the concern is that this addendum did not reach citizens who are directly affected on this in a timely basis. They were not notified. It kept dragging and dragging on. And the project can't be delayed right now, but I am surprised that an addendum was attached and citizens were not notified of this addendum. And then it also went through the County Commission on Tuesday, which was noted on the document, the addendum document, but come on, two days, three days to? I think there's a lack of communication here. Thank you.
Let me ask you one question, sir. What are the unintended issues?
They're being investigated now.
Well, what are they so we know we cover them here?
They're not going to be covered right now, Mr. Mayor. I apologize for this. I want this to go forward, but we don't know yet.
Okay. Thank you.
I just wanted to clarify that the agreement, that's in a, it's not really an addendum to the easement. The easement is what you're voting on, and then the agreement would be also what you're voting on. But the agreement, it just keeps the status quo. So that easement language and the way that was written basically put another permitting authority in the process, which would be the county. And the agreement takes that back out. So what we did was we created an agreement of our county to keep the status quo, so we, to expedite permitting, so we don't have another layer of permitting just because we have a beach renourishment project. That's all the agreement does.
Thank you very much. And also, this particular item and the agreement was before, it was the last time in our packet, and we had some questions, and that's why it was brought back. And then we were also waiting for the county to vote on it. So, and we, to let the audience know, we get our packets on Friday nights, and please stay delivering to us on Friday nights. We get the packets, and we have a week to get a hold of, or four, five days to get a hold of court near any staff member to find out if we have questions or to answer our questions that we have. So that's how the process works for us. We do get them on Friday nights, as they do appear in the county, excuse me, on the city's webpage. And also, this is not the first agreement that we have had as a city to do these projects. And Mike, we've done three, four, three projects at the beach already, with renourishment projects that were truck hauls similar to this one in the past. So I mean, this is not new. This is just clarifying the agreement for the permitting. That's basically what this is.
Right. All it does is basically say, because the easement says that any dune improve, any improvements that are along the dunes have to be approved by the county, where basically that added another layer of government, and we're trying to not do that. So all we did was keep the status quo. That agreement, that's all it does, is keep the status quo. We're the permitting authority for the City of Satellite Beach, and it just remains that way.
Thank you. Any further public comment? Here are none. Back to council. Council comments? Here are none. Do I have a motion?
I'd make one, but I'm not sure what to call these documents. We have, I'll move that we approve the city entering into this document called easement, which will be signed by the city manager, and approve the memorandum of agreement that's to be signed by the mayor.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Gott, second by Councilman Montanaro. Any further discussion by council? Here are none. Lenore?
Councilwoman Deanan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Brymer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montanaro?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gott?
Yes.
Mary Catino?
Yes. Motion carries five, nothing.
Before you go on, we've got some people standing out there, and we do have some, still have some chairs in here if somebody can get them to come in.
Thank you very much. I know you asked and see if they would, not seats. Council, before I go on to the next agenda item, is it permission to move Agenda Item 11 before 10, since it's just a donation, because I believe 10's going to take some time? Is that correct? Okay. We'll, we'll take Agenda Item Number 11 next, which is Discuss Take Action on the Satellite Beach Soccer Club Donation Agreement. Courtney, is this here?
Sure. Carrie and myself and attorney Beatle have been working on this with the soccer club. Basically, what this is, is an agreement to accept a donation from them, and if we don't initiate the project within a year of accepting the funds, then we would provide the money back. They, they wanted an agreement to solidify that, so that's what we did.
And I believe Mrs. Graham's here to present.
Oh, so we get the money, too. Oh, I just saw the picture, correct. I actually got Charlie Graham on, um, he's on, he's on, there it is.
My bridge is from Satellite Beach Soccer Club, $10,000.
And if I could say a few words about Charlie, since he's on FaceTime. He's, he's been a very big reason why we're here today, and he worked very, very hard with Carrie to, to get to this point, and we really appreciate his efforts. We joke around that he accomplished more in four hours than we could do in, you know, four months, so, so we want to just thank him for his efforts and tell him we appreciate him.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. On this, do I have a motion to approve?
To approve the conditional gift agreement with the Satellite Beach Soccer Club?
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Gott, second by Councilman Montanaro. Any further discussion by council?
Did you turn in the chair?
No. I gave it to Lenore. Thank you. Any further council comments? Here are none. I'd open up for public comments on this agenda item. Here are none. Back to council. Lenore?
Councilwoman Deanan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Brymer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montanaro?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gott?
Yes.
Mary Catino?
Yes. Motion passes, and thank you Soccer Club very much, and thanks to staff for putting this together. Okay, moving on to Agenda Item Number 10, Discuss Take Action on Recommendation to Resolve Beach Street Right-of-Way Vacation Issue. Courtney?
I don't want to reiterate everything in the staff report, but I do want to kind of give you a background of how I came to a decision to, to ask another attorney to look at this issue. Basically, my concern with this right-of-way vacation process kind of evolved over time, and part of it had to do with, basically, the, a lot of the letters that were coming in from a neighboring property owner that expressed a lot of concern with the procedures and, and also the impact to their property. I was getting somewhat concerned about that, as well as the, it appeared that we were going to go through litigation with the clerks. So what I wanted to do was make sure that that vacation was done correctly in the first place. So I, when I say correctly, I mean procedurally, and I became concerned with the procedures on that when I started looking at other cities and their procedures when we were creating this right-of-way vacation ordinance. So, and a lot of you, I, I kind of talked through things with, and sometimes I go to events with you, and, and I did that with Councilman Montanaro, and he suggested, you know, why don't you get someone else to look at it? And we were hiring Mr. Langley, who's here, and he can probably come up since he's going to go through his opinion. We hired Mr. Langley. I asked Mr. Cliff Shepherd, who's our CRA Board Attorney, for advice on, you know, who, what attorney could deal with two BOA cases that we had, appeals that we were going through. And he recommended Mr. Langley, so we began this process, and I said, well, you know, could you look at this right-of-way vacation just to begin with, to see if it, if it was done right to begin with? Because if we're going through, if we're going to go through litigation, I want to make sure that we're on some, some footing there. And he, he created an opinion letter for us, which evolved after that, when we realized that we started looking at our own codes and procedures and processes, and we'll go through that after, after he, he goes through his opinion. I'll give you the range of recommendations that I'm making to you to resolve this and other issues after he gets done with his opinion.
Good evening. I'm Dan Langley with Fishback Dominic Law, partner in the firm. As Ms. Parker indicated, I did review the issue of whether Resolution 920, the vacation and abandonment of a portion of Beach Drive was properly enacted. That's the extent of my investigation was just on that one issue. Being a city attorney, I understand myself, I represent a number of cities, I'm the city attorney for multiple cities, that when a, an opinion is asked of you concerning a previous action taken by the city, your instinct is to do whatever you can to support and defend the action of the council. I stepped into this with an open mind, and I wanted to look at it objectively, and not for or against the city. I was asked to give a straight opinion, what I thought the, whether the process was correct or not. I was given a number of documents, backup documents from the city, and I also asked a number of questions about the process. Essentially, my understanding is this item came before the city council, not through any formal process. It's been adopted by the city in the code, and there was not any notice, formal notice given, other than some discussion at a public meeting. I looked at this issue, the right-of-way in particular was dedicated on a plat, and there are a number of different attorney general's opinions that span the course of decades that discuss the procedures for vacation abandonment of right-of-ways and, and partial vacation abandements of portions of plats. At any time, you have a dedication to the public on a plat, which would include a dedication of a public park, dedication of a public beach, dedication of a public right-of-way, you have to look at the plating statute, Chapter 177, and make sure that the city conforms to minimum standards of that statute for dealing with dedications on a plat. I was looking at that in particular to see if that process was followed, and it appeared to me that it was not followed. The statute specifically requires that a fee simple owner of the property make an application to the city, and they have to, the property owner has to show that the requested vacation will not affect the ownership right of convenient access to persons owning other parts of the subdivision. This particular plat covers a very large area of the city, and so other individuals that own lots within the same subdivision have a right to be involved in the process as to whether the right-of-way issue is vacated and abandoned, because it may affect their rights of access. Now, this may have been a paper road, whereas it wasn't improved with road improvements, but nonetheless, the public has, and in particular, the owners of the subdivision have a right to be heard. Additionally, the property owner who, who requested vacation abandonment of the right-of-way has the duty, the property owner, not the city, to make sure that there's a notice published in the newspaper for at least two weeks in a paper of general circulation in the county. That was not done, and that, in my opinion, makes the, the Resolution 920 null and void, so it has no effect. The right-of-way is still a right-of-way. It's not returned to fee simple ownership, so it still has an easement on it. That's my opinion. I understand there may be a difference of opinion on this issue. I respect that, but I've done a lot of vacation abandments in my career for three different cities, and most cities follow a process that includes public notice, more than just talking about it at a public meeting. I'm here to answer any questions. I do have some suggestions for you. If you want to pursue and ratify the previous action of the council and vacation abandonment of that part, part of the right-of-way, I would encourage you to redo the process and adopt an ordinance and give notice to the public. If you desire not to do that, there is a resolution that's been recorded in the public records, and I think there is a need to at least clarify in the record that the vacation abandonment was, is null and void and should be reflected as such in the records. So, not suggesting any action, formal action tonight, but there should need to be at least some sort of direction to the staff as to which process that you want to follow, but it is my opinion that the vacation abandonment was, is null and void. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question. Mr. Langley, in this report, it references statute of limitations. In other words, you're going back, and I guess the recommendation is to rescind two resolutions, one vacating this portion of Beach Street, Beach Drive, and another on Cinnamon. Can you explain that statute of limitations, and why, if we've never had a process in place for vacating right-of-ways, why we're not then rescinding all the right-of-ways that we have vacated in the past historically?
Right. My focus was Resolution 920. I was not asked to give any opinion on any other vacation abandonment procedure. Statute of limitations generally are bars to challenging actions of the city or any party, so if, if a certain length of time goes by, an action is deemed legal by the fact that no one has the right to challenge it any longer. So to go back many, many years to try to ratify a previous action where the statute of limitations have run on that particular issue is really kind of pointless.
Can you explain this, the four, four year, and now we're lumping, now we're combining the Cinnamon Drive vacation in this process? Well, that's, the Cinnamon Drive right-of-way vacation occurred somewhat, you know, I think at the next meeting, and that was done in the same way. There was no notice, there was, so, you know, we can't say one was completed correctly or incorrectly and not the other. So that's what we're trying, I'm trying to tell you is, what we need to do is, or my recommendation would be to, we also did two easements, by the way, in the past four years, and our easement notification, even though we have an ordinance, still is incorrect. So we need to not only look at our ordinances, both for right-of-way vacations, but we also need to include notice requirements in our easement vacations, and I would recommend going back and redoing the two easement vacations. And then also with the Cinnamon or REM property, we would, we would need to contact both property owners for the Gersh property and the REM property to try to come up with some reasonable soli- solutions to the issue. But both, I would consider both of them being null and void since both of those right-aways were done in basically the same manner.
And, Mr. Langley, I assume you spoke with Mr. Beadle because Mr. Beadle has been involved with this process. And there have been numerous questions, it's a lengthy package, but these questions were asked because we were very well aware that there was no, the code is basically silent with respect to vacations and right-aways. And there was much discussion about via ordinance, via resolution, how to notice, you know, you probably saw the abbreviated minutes, but a lot of discussion, I assume you two have discussed that because last I remember, Mr. Beadle gave his opinion back to us that the resolution was acceptable and notice was proper because there were numerous public meetings. And then he asked to look into it again and I'm a little bewildered how we ended up with an outside attorney without it coming back to the city council for consideration.
To answer your question, I did not have a conversation with your city attorney. I did read his written opinion that was part of the materials that was provided to me. I did agree in my opinion letter that, to respect to his conclusion that a resolution is a method in which vacation can occur, I did agree with that opinion. I didn't see the need to talk to him specifically because his opinion was well documented. He cited multiple sites there, secondary authority. As you'll see in my opinion letter, I cite to specific Attorney General's opinions. This is not a personal, just a personal opinion of mine. I cite specifically multiple Florida Attorney General's opinions for these conclusions and statutes that provide for these minimum processes.
And if I could just, when I, when I started looking at the right-of-way vacations and realizing that the notices weren't completed, I did watch those meetings. And there's other issues that go beyond just the notice. So typically, when you have an ordinance, you would have a very succinct process where the staff would write a staff report, look at all things like the impacts of the surrounding property owners, impacts to utilities, utilities were, you know, would be notified. And none of that was, was done. And I know that there was some discussion on the utilities, but there was no notice to the utilities for, for their opinions on the vacation. The other issue is there was no discussion on the impacts of the surrounding property owners either. So I think, you know, it goes beyond just the notification. If you have a documented process on how you complete the vacation, then the council is provided with all the information and that's the difference. If you, if you don't have all the information and you don't discuss all the aspects of the right-of-way vacation in a succinct manner, then you may have missed something and your conclusion may have been different.
I, I'd want to say a few things for the record. Number one, if you went back and you listened to those meetings, you'd be very aware that I actively pursued putting an ordinance in place with respect to vacations of right-aways and easements in the city. Never happened. But it's been the longstanding policy of this city council to vacate in such a manner as we did on these two vacations. So I want to make sure that that's on the record. We did nothing any different than the council previously had done prior to that, other than there are certain people who are in opposition to the, these two vacations and they're going to do whatever they can do to make sure that they don't happen. So with that said, I'm not going to support the rescinding of either of these resolutions.
Counsel comments?
I don't understand the comment about policy of this council, but it's neither here nor there.
I think it's up to, as a council who represents citizens in the city, that we need to do it the correct way. I mean, I think it's part of that, this happens and we need to have a documented procedure on how this is done. Now, I don't think you can, if it's been done that in the past because it was wrong in the past doesn't mean we really need to continue that. We need to make it right so the process is in place, is my feeling. And I, to me, it should have nothing to do with who the easements against or taken form property owner, should have nothing to do with that. Was the process done correctly? And if it wasn't done correctly, we need to make it happen correctly. And I guess my second point to this is putting a timeframe to make sure we have the documents and so forth in place so that if these two are rescinded, that they can reapply for adherence. Giving you a timeframe when we can get this finished.
Well, you're, the first reading for the right-of-way vacation is under next meeting. We had to actually make changes to it based on this opinion. And then we also have to update the easement, right-of, easement vacation procedures as well.
It'll be an ordinance or a resolution?
The right-of-way vacation ordinance is a, is an ordinance. And that, and that actually is in the land development regulations.
Just, just to clarify for the public, an easement and a vacation are two different things. An easement is when you're building something on your property and part of what you're building falls into either the power company or the Brevard County Sewer or another entity's zone of control. That is what an easement is. A vacation...
Right-of-way.
Excuse me, you're right. A vacation is when you're actually...
Right-of-way, not a vacation.
Right-of-way. Well, the vacation of this right-of-way is an entirely different thing. And when you look at a vacation of a right-of-way, I've been coming to city council meetings since probably 1986. We haven't done any vacations in our city since that timeframe because the mindset of our community was during the sixties and seventies, a lot of right-of-way vacations were made at the end of most of the canals. All of those lands were given away on both the Grand Canal side and closer to South Patrick. So we don't have any places for people to put a canoe or a kayak in the water because back at that point in time, people didn't look to the future for what those right-of-ways benefited the public in the future. And I was at these meetings when they were going on for this particular item and I heard comments like, well, we don't ever see you using that parcel of land. It's just a piece of land that nobody's ever going to use. And, you know, we don't know what technology is going to bring 20 or 25 years down the road that that parcel of property might be something that the city could have used for either an exfiltration project along A1A for stormwater runoff. There are different things that we have come to realize over the last 15, 20 years that there are pieces of property that the city owns that at some point in time could be valuable to the residents of our city. That wasn't, none of the process that we looked at and none of the thought process was done during this vacation of this right-of-way. You know, we have people that come up to this podium on a weekly, every meeting, basically, and talk about transparency. There was no transparency for this to the public that adjoined that area for them to voice their concerns about this vacation of this right-of-way. And to me, that was paramount in me asking Courtney, when I first came back on council in January, she brought this up and I encouraged her to start looking at it because I think that there was a disservice done to the residents of our city.
Further comment, Mark?
Mr. Langley, I read your, read your opinion and it was very helpful, it was very concise and it came to the point. I guess I always look for a summary in things. So what I'm, my summary is, is that the process in this was not followed. The notice to the, to the surrounding property owners is really the inherent weakness in this and it moved through without that process being in place. Is that pretty much the nuts and bolts answer?
That's correct. There were other things not followed that are required by the statute, but in my opinion, the failure to give notice as required by the statute is fatal.
Is the most glaring issue in what we're seeing?
Yes. And in fact, that issue was raised by an adjoining property owner through their attorney, that failure to give notice to the public made the right-of-way vacation deficient. And that was something that you were threatened with litigation over. So, I mean, obviously, they thought that was an important issue. And the statute that I'm referring to does specifically require the property owner that requests vacation and abandonment of the right-of-way to show that other ownership rights of convenient access to persons owning other parts of the subdivision will not be impaired. So the statute specifically talks to the importance of those rights of others in the subdivision, not just to those who are requesting the vacation and abandonment.
Thank you. That's all I have. Any further?
I have additional questions.
Hold on, let me just, yeah, okay.
Again, you didn't speak with Mr. Beadle, but at those hearings, pretty much every adjoining property was at those, or at those hearings. It was well documented that every adjoining property owner was in attendance and had spoke at those meetings. The other thing is, Courtney, you mentioned that our ordinance regarding vacations is drafted. Mr. Langley, you made some changes. You've seen, I thought you said per his comments, you've made some changes.
We will, we will be making changes based on that opinion, yes.
Based on the opinion. I'm sorry, misunderstood. I thought you said per his comments, you're making changes to the ordinance. I've seen the ordinance and in that ordinance, people east of A1A and people west of South Patrick Drive have to notify the entire city, whereas people in between do not. I have a real issue with that. And I'm just putting that out there. So that might be something else legally you may want to look at because I think it's very discriminatory that people that own different properties in different locations in the city are being treated differently. So you're saying you've looked at other vacation right-of-way ordinances and you've come up with this that we're not meeting the notice requirements, but yet we're not even very similar to other requirements when it comes to this new ordinance that's out?
Well, my response to that would be, in many other cities, they don't have a lot of waterfront property. And waterfront property in most cities are considered, public access to those areas are considered prime. And you can look at City of Melbourne, they require if you vacate a waterfront, a piece of waterfront property, you have to provide light property in the same area. And so I, I don't think, what I was trying to do is respond to the citizen concerns I have received. There are citizens that think that have asked me, can council just vacate the beach accesses like that? And, and the answer would be, well, yeah. I mean, yes, they can. And so there's a lot of, there's a lot of fear out there because of that vacation. And that's what I was trying to respond to, is trying to provide a process that would try to absolve some of the fears in the community because that's what I've been hearing. And the other issue is that it's not discriminatory, is that when you, when people live on the beach and there's a right-of-way next to it, the right-of-way is not theirs. The right-of-way is the public's. And that's the, that's the public's perception that they have access to that water. So when you vacate that, that's different for them than an easement on somebody's property in the interior of the city. There's, there's a different meaning there.
Well, I completely understand. We're really talking about beach accesses at the end of right-aways abutting the beach and then a property owner such as this one where they own on both sides, on A1A and the beach, and there was a paper right-of-way going through. So let's not get this distorted. The reality is, it's been over two years and ordinance has not been on the books, even though that I and others have requested it for over two years. And here we are now with no ordinance on the books regarding vacations or right-aways and you want to rescind too that were done in the same manner as they've always been done in the past. And I have a real issue with that. But I'm done for now.
Thank you. I must say one thing. My thing is, I don't really care where the property's at. It makes no difference. My main concern is that the procedure is followed correctly. Whether it's a beach, it's right-of-way, I want the procedure to be in place so anybody can come here and we're not back in this position where we are tonight. It needs to be done correctly. And my feeling is, we need to do it correctly. We owe it to the citizens, we owe it to the property owners. And I think we've got to put blinders on and it's not oceanfront property, it's not canal property, it's right-of-way. Throughout the whole city has to be done correctly. So I would rather look at this myself, not as those two pieces of property, but as a procedure in place that works and is legal. First off, it has to be legal and we've got to follow it or we're going to be back here again.
Okay. Question I have is kind of a follow-up to what you just said was, is procedurally, for purposes of public comment, which we're going to have here in just a minute, what is the next action that this council would take tonight on this particular thing? If, if the, if the intention would be as to your recommendation to rescind, what would be our process tonight?
Those five items that are listed under recommended actions.
Okay. I just want to hear somebody say it.
They're worded to accommodate Attorney Langley's suggestions and recommendations.
Okay. That's fine. Thank you.
And so we would need to be doing five separate motions on each of these because they each deal with something a little bit different.
Thank you.
If you would like me to go through them, I can answer them.
Let me open it up to public comment at this time and then we'll come back and have more, I'm sure, counsel comments. Please, this is a three-minute time and I will adhere to that because of the length of the agenda tonight. So at this time, citizens' comments are open. Your name and your...
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Honorable City Council members, my name is Cliff Reproger. My business address is 1785, 7095 West Nassau Boulevard. I'm an attorney with the law firm, Gray Robinson. We represent Bridgette and Klaus Gersh with respect to this issue. Now, because we represent the, the Gersh's interests, which are directly related to this issue, if I go over three minutes, I'm just going to ask the council for a little bit of leniency. I might go over for a minute or two, but these are very important legal issues that I'm going to be discussing with you and I'm just going to ask for the council's leniency in that regard. Now, as you've discussed, this is not the first time that the issue of the validity of this vacation of the right-of-way has been addressed. During, during the public meeting at which nine, Resolution 920 was granted, council addressed notice requirements and validity of the action that they were taking. As referenced in the memorandum issued by the city attorney dated March 15, 2013, which I'll discuss in a moment, the city council discussed actual notice of the effect, of the affected parties in that all persons abutting the right-of-way that was being vacated had actual notice and/or participated in the city council process of vacation. So to say that those owners had no notice or didn't participate, absolutely incorrect. And that's not what the record supports at all. Now, in that opinion, your city council issued a well-written, well-reasoned, well-researched opinion essentially leading to the ultimate conclusion, although I don't know that the memorandum actually directly states it, that the action of vacating by adoption of Resolution 920 was proper. At least it lends substantial support to that regard. Now, addressing Mr. Langley's opinion and Ms. Barker explained to you how you got to where you got, the, there are issues that are tangentially related to this issue. And while we're talking about notice, I will indicate to you that my clients had absolutely no notice that this was happening tonight. And we have been involved with Mr. Langley's office on a subsequent issue related to offense variance and no one at any point in time with the city told us that there was going to be any subsequent opinion related to the vacation or that it would be discussed tonight. And the only reason that we found out about it tonight was because somebody gave us a copy of the agenda at the 11th hour. So keep that in mind as you're talking about notice tonight. Now, let's talk about Mr. Langley's opinion. The opinion cites to Section 177.01 of the Florida statutes, which provides for notice for vacation plats by governing bodies of the counties of the state. Mr. Langley states on page three of his opinion that the Florida, Florida Attorney General has opined that, that that means, and meaning the notice requirements, also applies as minimum standard for municipalities. For that position, Mr. Langley cites to two Attorney General opinions in his opinion, 7612 and 200511. His reliance on those two Attorney General's opinions is completely misplaced. In fact, Mr. Langley actually misrepresents in his opinion what those Attorney General opinions say. 7612 specifically states the opposite of what Mr. Langley suggests. It states, quoting a prior Attorney General opinion, 75171, that municipalities may take such action, subject only to valid terms and conditions as they choose to prescribe. There's no notice minimum standard reference, as Mr. Langley asserts. Additionally, nowhere in 200511 does it expressly state that the notice provisions in 171.01 Florida statutes apply to municipalities. That opinion doesn't even apply to municipalities. It has to do with a county bringing a vacation application on its own motion. Also, to the extent that Mr. Langley states that the vacation needs to be by ordinance, that's incorrect too. Now he's reversing his opinion and he's saying that he agrees with Mr. Beadle that it can be by resolution. That's not necessarily what his opinion states. His entire opinion is misplaced. Now, let's talk about the suggestions that Mr. Langley has made. Mr. Langley states that the resolutions are null and void and that you should rescind them. Now, I may not be board certified in local government law like Mr. Langley is, but after 17 years of practice in local government law, I can tell you, and six of which as an assistant county attorney with Brevard County, I can tell you that if a resolution is null and void, rescinding it isn't proper. It's null and void. It has no effect. The bottom line is, the city can't take that action. You vacated the city, vacated the right-of-way. You effectively granted my crime... You effectively granted my client title to that property free and clear, no longer subject to any platted right-of-way. You can't just take it back. You can't unilaterally decide that you don't like that you did something and then undo it. You did it. You granted an interest in property to my client that has been accepted and recorded by my clients. My clients have engaged in substantial efforts to develop that property since that time. If in fact you believe that the resolution is null and void, there's no need for the city to adopt anything at this point. The resolution, again, has no effect. And my client doesn't agree with that, and isn't going to voluntarily give back any right-of-way interest to the city at this point in time. So if you're so sure that the resolution is null and void, then the city needs to put its money where its mouth is and file a lawsuit, not adopt a rescinding resolution, against my client to quiet title, or to declare that the resolution is null and void, such that my client does, no longer will have the interest that they claim to have. But you don't get to make that unilateral decision. A court does. And let me tell you how it works in the reverse. If you do try to take the action rescinding the Resolution 920, my clients, and I suspect along with the other folks whose properties, interests would be taken as well by rescinding their resolutions, will absolutely file a lawsuit against the city to quiet title in their favor for slander of title by the city, and, and/or better yet, for inverse condemnation, to force the city to pay fair market value for the property that it's now attempting to take back. Now, as a former and current government lawyer, I don't particularly like going around to city council chambers and threatening lawsuits, and in terms of the city being adverse to such threats, I don't know how long this phantom Meacham-Clark lawsuit has been hanging out there and waved around in vain, I suspect since March. But if you're concerned about that, I can absolutely assure you that my clients are ready, willing, and able, and absolutely committed, to filing the actions I've described as soon as they believe that the action's ripe to do so. So I would submit you, to you, that that's an awful lot to bank on when you have two competing attorneys' opinions, one from your own city attorney telling you that what you did was proper, and you're going to rely on an out-of-county attorney who stands only to benefit by more litigation if you adhere to what he's telling you to do. So what I would respectfully suggest to you, that you do, is one, that you not take the recommended action of one through three, and rely on Mr. Beadle's opinion. And two, if you do plan to take those actions, that you look long and hard at this issue before you take those actions, and you ask your own local council to opine on whether Mr. Langley's opinion is correct. You ought to ask him that tonight, because he hadn't spoken tonight, but his opinion was pretty good. With that, I'll respectfully request that you, that you not take Actions 133.
Thank you very much. Further citizens' comments?
The issue is not whether this action was taken incorrectly or correctly. The question is whether it was legal or illegal. And it's very clear to me, the city's going to face litigation from one side or the other. The gauntlet was thrown down here just before me. As such, I guess, I don't know what the right term is, you do need the lawyer up and make sure that you're on good grounds whichever way you're going. One thing I will say that I heard from Mr. Langley, the comment was made about the adjacent owners on the right-of-way knew about this. The words I heard were subdivision. O'Gallie by the Sea was platted in 1921, I think it was. There are literally hundreds of lots, everything all the way over to whatever it is, like Sixth Street 10. And there's a, if it's, the entire subdivision has to be noticed, that's a huge number. I would also suggest on the ordinance for vacation process, you may want to do it the same all the way. There's a little piece of right-of-way behind the old pizza place. I would hope that they would do the same notice as the people on the ocean would. Last night, we talked about one that's down there near Shell Street. Same thing, if somebody wants that, they ought to go through the same process as they would on the ocean. It's all valuable, it all has some purpose in the future, public purpose. Thank you.
Thank you. Floor still open? Citizens' comments?
I know all you want is one more lawyer, but I'm actually a resident too. My name's Dion Clark. I live at 1697 A1A, the townhome directly south of the subject property. You've had enough of that. To put this in perspective, the vacation issue, I wasn't at the hearing, was only realized when I saw destruction of COs behind my property. And we looked into that. I called FDEP, and he said that the Gersh's had asked for a permit, they were denied. Somehow, the city granted permission to do that, the FDEP followed suit. I have emails to that effective, if you haven't seen them. Since then, my law partner and I have attempted in good faith to put the city on notice of the potential harm that's now been realized. The lawsuit that I drafted was given to the city as a courtesy prior to filing. It wasn't a phantom, it wasn't a threat, it was meant to be of good notice. That's why it wasn't filed, it was given, as the prior attorney said, months in advance to give some notice. So we, nobody wants litigation, this is what we're all here trying to avoid. And while I can appreciate the fact that you're faced here with a situation that has litigation at every turn, I would encourage you to return to the status quo, you're saying, invite the process, that's legal. The vacation was improper, at least in process, but since that was up, was not per city code. The vacation or the, the requested modification of that was denied. A former city council member was admonished in this process. The whole thing is ripe for litigation. So I think to rescind the action and return to the status quo is the least harm. Thank you.
Thank you. Further public comment?
I have a grave concern that nobody supposedly, or has stated, followed up on the easement for utilities and stormwater runoff. If everyone's aware where this property is in this room, which is on the beach, and it's been discovered now in another area on the beach that there are still septic tanks, and to have that 2009 ordinance for easements for stormwater onto the beach, that is polluting our waters. And that's another issue that needs to be addressed here, stormwater runoff.
Sir, we need to stick to this agenda item.
It is--
Stormwater, and sir, this is a, a, a right-of-way issue?
It is.
It is not a stormwater issue, sir. It's a right-of-way, so I'd please direct--
Yes, it is. I'm directing comments to the ordinance passed, I believe in 209, that's in the package, related to this vacation of property, that talks about Florida power, Bell Telephone, AT&amp;T, and stormwater runoff issues. I believe that document is in there. So I believe I have a right to address that issue. And furthermore, the beach accesses, they're all there, and if residents are concerned about beach accesses being beat it over--
Sir, I'm, I'm going to make stop here. Beach accesses have nothing to do with this. This is concerning the right-of-way, whether it's done correctly or incorrectly. That's what we are here to discuss tonight. Not beach accesses, not stormwater. That could be part of this, but that's not what we're here doing. We are doing the right-of-way. So I will, more than happy to let you speak on your opinion on the right-of-way, whether it's legal or not legal. Please, from the audience, thank you. You still have the floor.
I do have the floor, and I made those statements because they were brought up in the whole vacation process here. I am not a lawyer. I'm merely voicing the items that were involved in the vacation for the record. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Further public comment? Here are no further public comment. Public comment portion's closed. Bringing it back to council. Council comments?
Yeah. Oh, we'll get one more attorney in here. Attorney Reproger did a good job of advocating for his client. I disagree with a number of the statements he made. It doesn't matter how many of the neighbors were at that meeting, if the requirements of the statute were not met, then it is not a legal procedure. The, he also made a comment about, an indignant comment about no notice being given for tonight, we're not taking actions tonight. There will be plenty of notice given when we move to that point. So what you've seen here tonight is, you know, the dueling lawyers, and depending upon which side they're advocating for. And it is clear to me that we're going to get sued one way or the other, so we need to do what we think is right, and not be intimidated by the lawyer who speaks most It is important that we follow the procedures that we are required to follow, and I personally believe that if we do those, we will, we will be standing on solid ground.
Thank you. Further comment?
Yes, I have a question for Mr. Langley. With reference to the Florida statute, I believe it's 177, we spoke about this at our meetings, and Mr. Beadle had mentioned too that that's with respect to vacations of county right-of-ways. Can you explain that?
Sure. The Attorney General's opinion, specifically, remind you that actually, the attorney for the property manager claimed that it didn't provide the statement, as previously observed by this office, the Office of the Attorney General. The power of a county or a municipality to vacate property dedicated to republic use is controlled by statute, footnote, chapter 177, citing, and then it says, see Attorney General's opinion 8351, and it says statutory dedication by plat can be withdrawn only by vacation of the plat and importance of the provisions of statute. So the attorney for the property manager would have you believe that that statute doesn't apply, when the Attorney General makes a statement that county's order of cities to vacate dedicated public, properties dedicated to public use is controlled by statute. And then it cites to another Attorney General's opinion that talks about the plat vacation statute, which is the one I'm saying that it could be followed. So I believe the Attorney General's opinion relying on, in fact, says what, it says, it says, it says, further, that provision or that statement that he's into talks about two different things, and I cite two different Attorney General's opinions to support the entirety of that sentence, not just one or two for one proposition. So I do believe the statute applies, and that's why I came with that opinion. And in fact, I've used that statute in my career for right-of-way vacations, and there's not a more specific procedure in a city code that provides more notice in the statute, this is minimal. And I also will remind you that it doesn't matter whether or not you had a couple of adjacent property owners attend the hearing, the statute requires notice in the newspaper, and the purpose of that, in my opinion, is to notify the entire subdivision of the particular asset rights that they may have, that may be affected by vacation abandonment of the right-of-way. So it's, it's not, in my opinion, possible to hear the failure to do the statutory notice for a few of the adjacent property owners to come to a public meeting and speak on this issue. Now, if the statute says you only have to notice a couple of property owners adjacent to the property at the meeting, I think that's a decent argument, and I don't know if you would actually get a court to agree with that, because cases are very strict, when a statute requires specific notice, you have to do it. Otherwise, the action is invalid, it's all avoided. And to go to the, if I may, the issue of whether it's all avoided or whether you rescind it or not, I believe it's all avoided now. The other reason, I would suggest, if you take a further action, if you want to keep that in check, is there is a document recorded in the public records of the county, the resolution, that gives notice to the world that the vacation abandonment occurred. I think it's currently--
Avoided.
So there needs to be some sort of correction in the record if you believe that that should not pursue, be pursued with another vacation abandonment process. And to further clarify, I think it's more appropriate to do it by ordinance, but I also believe it's not improper to do it by resolution. Attorney Journal, we'll certainly be Attorney General's support, it's not mine. It's more appropriate to do it by ordinance. More appropriate, to me, doesn't mean it's not appropriate to do it the other way. So that's, I don't know why someone would say that I said it has to be by ordinance. I would recommend, if you want to continue the process, you do it by ordinance, so we don't have that argument out there from the adjacent property owners of the Dunn property.
Mr. Beadle, do you believe that the vacation is non-avoided?
I'm going to answer the question this way. My job as the city attorney is to defend actions that previous councils take. My, and I've done that before in many circumstances, which council members probably can recall. The issue came up as to whether or not the, the action taken by the then council in vacating the partial, or the partial vacation of the right-of-way was appropriate, and the primary issues were the, whether it needed to be done by ordinance or resolution, and then whether or not there was some sort of notice that, that was required to be made. I obviously opine differently than Mr. Langley about the, or the nature of the notice that needs to be given. Mr. Langley agrees that it can be done by resolution. Those were the two primary issues. The issue of notice was discussed at length at most of the, I believe at both of the council meetings, and as I indicated, my, my job at the time is to defend the action of council. And, and part of that is, you know, related to the home rule powers that you generally try to defend the city with. Mr. Langley has come to a different opinion, and that's all I can tell you.
I'm not done yet. I find this situation very awkward. We have a city attorney, this was not something that was done by the seat of our pants, there were multiple hearings, there was an application submitted to our staff, we've discussed, and I do believe there needs to be a process, and there should have always been a process in our land development regulations. I was dumbfounded and bewildered when there wasn't, but when an applicant comes in front of us, we're duty-bound to review it, or put a, put a, put a ordinance in place in our land development regulations, which still hasn't happened. But it shouldn't be at the demise of a property owner's come forward to us and thought they have gone through the proper process with the city attorney sitting up here, making all the right decisions, and then to find out that these two-- And then to find out that these two property owners have not even been notified that this is on the agenda when it comes to their property rights? I have a real issue with that. It's a very awkward situation. It's pretty clear to me that this council did not like the opinion that Mr. Beadle has given us. So they went out and got a hired gun to support a special interest group. And I find it very offensive. Very offensive. And I won't support rescinding these resolutions.
Thank you. Further comment from council?
May I make a motion?
Yes.
I move that we direct staff to prepare resolutions to rescind resolutions number 920 and 921 and place them on a future council agenda after applicable notice requirements set forth in Florida statutes. 177.101.4 have been met.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman McGott, second by Councilman Montanaro. Council, comments continue? Again, going back to mine, we've gotta make it right. We're gonna get in litigation, one way or the other, and it still doesn't make it right. If we don't take this with staff and make the procedure right, this is not saying that either of those two homeowners cannot come back and apply. To me, that has nothing to do with it. To me, it has to do with the procedure. And yes, I agree with you, there has to be a procedure in place. So if this makes us get the procedure in place, I'm gonna be for that. And, you know, and also for giving those people the right to come back and run council. And I think that's critically important that we get it done like that.
Any further comment?
No.
Have a motion? One more?
Absolutely not.
Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Councilman McGott?
Yes.
Mayor Cattino?
Yes, motion carries four to one. I am going to, we have a big pack, we've been going for a while here. I'm gonna take a 10-minute break and we'll reconvene in 10 minutes. Hold on, hold on, hold on. Okay, I'm sorry. We gotta do individually. I apologize. I took them all at once. I'm gonna reconvene the meeting and the fund number two. I'm sorry. We're supposed to do all five of them individually.
May I make a motion?
Please.
I move that we direct staff to prepare resolutions to rescind and redo easement resolutions number 888 and 912 and place them on a future council agenda after applicable notice requirements have been met.
Second.
Motion by Councilman McGott, second by Councilman Montanaro. Further discussion from council? Here are none, Lenore?
Councilman Dina?
No.
Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Councilman McGott?
Yes.
Mayor Cattino?
Yes. Motion carries four to one.
Make a motion?
Please.
I move that we authorize reimbursement to the property owners at 1687 Highway A1A for their fence permit and recording expenses and direct staff to contact them to determine costs to settle this matter.
A motion by Councilman McGott, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Montanaro. Any further discussion?
Yes, would you be kind enough, city manager, to explain to the public what the reimbursement costs are for and why?
Sure. Basically, what we were doing is reimbursing the property owners for expenses they incurred in this vacation process, so, or after the vacation was completed. So the resolution recording fees, they permitted and constructed a fence as well as, you know, paid the permitting fees. From what I understand, I was looking at Google Maps today and they've also sodded the area of the right-of-way. So the whole area behind the fence, I think, has been sodded as well. So if that sodding project, I guess, was permissible by DEP, then that could also be included in the settlement expenses. So basically, what we would do is contact them to, to basically create a settlement agreement for damages that they incurred in this vacation process and procedure.
I amend my motion to include expenses for sod.
Do we know that there was a DEP permit for that sod?
Not yet. Not yet, we'll look into it.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not, I don't wanna do that until we know for sure that there's a DE permit.
Yeah, that's what I was saying, that any legal expenses that they've incurred.
So I have a motion by council?
I withdraw my motion.
You withdraw your?
My amendment.
Right, so we have a motion on the floor by Councilman McGott. And a second by Councilman Montanaro. Further discussion from council?
Here are none, Lenore?
Councilman Dina?
No.
Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Councilman McGott?
Yes.
Mayor Cattino?
Yes. Moving on and forward.
Move to direct staff to, A, draft policy and procedures for requesting and granting right-of-way vacations, and B, accept no further applications for vacating until such policies and procedures have been adopted.
Second.
Motion by Councilman McGott, second by Councilman Montanaro. Further discussion?
Yes, I believe staff has been directed via this council and the previous council numerous times to draft the policy. And, you know, why do we keep beating this dead horse over and over again? It's been a couple of years. Let's get it done, let's get it on the books, and we should've done it years ago. It's embarrassing. This whole situation's embarrassing.
Well, that's why this process is in place right now. And Courtney, we've talked on this numerous occasions and...
I mean, it's been through CMD, so we're...
It'll be to us at, excuse me, it'll be to us at the next...
No, no, twenty. Just a statement, and Mr. Beadle, you can probably, if an ordinance is drafted, there's a pending ordinance. So all applicants that come in are required to meet that new pending ordinance anyway. So the point of having this motion is moot.
Thank you, I do have a motion on the floor. Any further comment? Here are none, Lenore?
Councilman Dina?
No.
Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Councilman McGott?
Yes.
Mayor Cattino?
Yes. Motion carries. One more item, number five.
I move that we direct staff to draft updated easement vacation procedures to include notice requirements.
Second.
A motion by Councilman McGott, second by Councilman Montanaro. Further discussion by council?
Yes, motion is moot because the ordinance is already drafted with notice requirements. So I'm not gonna support it.
Thank you. Further discussion? Here are none, Lenore?
Councilman Dina?
No.
Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Councilman McGott?
Yes.
Mayor Cattino?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you. Apologize for the last time, but we will take a 10-minute break. Thank you. Thank you very much.
And we'll move on to agenda item number 12. Discuss, take action on ordinance number 1074. Jim?
Ordinance number 1074, an ordinance of the city of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, amending Chapter 26, Environment, by creating a new Article VI entitled Fertilizer Use on Urban Landscape to Provide for the Regulation of Pollutant Runoff and the Application of Fertilizers as Required by Law. Creating Section 26-105, Purpose and Intent; Section 26-106, Definitions; Section 26-107, Applicability; Section 26-108, Timing of Fertilizer Applications; Section 26-109, Fertilizer-Free Zone; Section 26-110, Low-Maintenance Zone; Section 26-111, Fertilizer Content and Application Rates; Section 26-112, Application Practices; Section 26-113, Management of Grass Clippings and Vegetative Matter; Section 26-114, Exemptions; Section 26-115, Training; Section 26-116, Licensing of Commercial Applicators; Section 26-117, Enforcement and Monitoring; Section 26-118, Penalty, Additional Remedy, Section 26-119, Appeals, Providing for Conflicting Provision, Providing for Severability, Providing for Codification and Effective Date, Providing for Reserved Sections 26-120 through 26-130. It's a second reading of ordinance number 1074.
Thank you.
Allen, are you the lead?
Yeah, good evening, mayor and city council. On October 16, city council carried a motion on first reading to adopt ordinance 1074. In addition to that, they had directed staff to send the ordinance back to the Planning and Zoning Board to look at the ordinance in addition to all the, first off, the comment letters that came back from FDIP and FDAC, as well as any other information that supported the more restrictive ordinance. Since the city council meeting, we've just got inundated with a lot of data and information that's came in from a lot of different sources. We compiled all that, sent it back to the Planning and Zoning Board, gave it them to review. We also posted it on the web. A few of those documents, three or four of them, to give you kind of a snapshot of the data that was provided, we've included in, and this is backup for you. At the October 21, Planning and Zoning Board, they did review all these documents, and there was some fairly lengthy discussion and interaction with the public. After reviewing all the documents, they made a motion to recommend that they reaffirm the ordinance as written with the more restrictive language. They felt that the documentation that they reviewed was supportive of their affirmation to go with the more restrictive ordinance.
Thank you. I don't give anything to add?
No, sir.
Thank you. Council?
I did some revisions, which you all got a copy of, and the changes are highlighted. Do you want me to address those briefly now?
Please.
On page two, I struck the words "and restricted." And if you go to page four, I'll explain why. We had two definitions here. One was for prohibited application period, and the other was for restricted application period. And as I sat and tried to think about this, I realized that what is occurring between, what is proposed to occur between June and September is not really a restriction, it's a prohibition. And that's borne out by Section 26-108, which prohibits the fertilizers containing nitrogen and/or phosphorus. So, being the wordsmith that I am, I am proposing that we strike the definition of restricted application period and just include that information, that time period, up under prohibited application period, so that a prohibited application period can mean multiple things as defined there. That would take us over to page five, Section 26-108, and that would negate the need for that second sentence, which talks about the restricted application period, but all apply to just the prohibited application period. On page six, the 26-111B, I'm suggesting that that sentence that's highlighted be stricken. When I read it, I couldn't tell what it was saying. And someone also noted that it was just kind of an add-on thing at the Brevard County hearing on their ordinance. It really doesn't add anything that I can see, so I would strike that in 26-111B. And then, when it came to the issue of athletic fields being exempt, if you'll notice that under 26-111E, the athletic fields are exempt just from this section. And I think the intent was to exempt it from the provisions of this ordinance. And so if you strike 26-111E and go to 26-114, you can add that under an exemption from this article. And I think that that was what was intended. So that the new C would be athletic fields at public parks and school facilities that apply the concepts and principles embodied in the Florida green at BMPs, et cetera. And then the question came up about some confusion about whether or not vegetable gardens and fruit trees are included in these prohibitions. And so just to clarify that, I've added a parrot D to the exemptions section to avoid any confusion as to whether or not they are applicable. And so that's why D is there. And that's, those are the changes.
Thank you. Council comments?
I wanna thank everybody for the emails. I've been inundated with emails. I think everybody actually has been copied on most of them. Fortunately, my email, my city email is so slow, it's really hard to respond. So I did read them all. It's just really cumbersome to respond. It's like ridiculous. So I did read them all, and if I were to do a tally, I would say it was 50/50. Fifty/50 want, 50% want the more restrictive, others 50% want the state-adopted ordinance. I think I was very vocal at the last meeting that I'm not gonna support anything more restrictive than the state-model ordinance, and I'm gonna leave it at that.
Thank you. Further council comments? I did get a lot of emails, thank you very much. I got a lot of them that were the same, just copied again. But still, thank you. I responded to a few of them today, 'cause a lot of them came in about 3 o'clock today, 3:30. I couldn't get to all of them. One lady was very nice and wrote and said, you know, "Do your homework." And I wrote back and said, "I've done a lot of homework. I can tell you, I have attended a lot of meetings, I've talked to a lot of scientists from both sides." And I don't think it's very much different than what we had in our previous agenda item. You talk to one side, from the guys from University of Florida, who, you know, a lot of their grants and so forth come from the fertilizer industry. You get one opinion. You talk to different environmental groups at Harbor Branch, you get another. But I can tell you, I have done a lot of research on it. And it's very hard for me to turn away from a lot of the stuff I see from the environmental Talking to even people not from this beach and the lagoon, but happening on lakes and so forth, I had a good conversation with Dr. Duane DeFries. And, you know, it's out there. The information's there. And I think it's overwhelming, so. But I do appreciate, you know, everybody's email, and I did read them. Any further counsel before I open it up to public?
I'll just add that these are the emails that I got, emails and attachments. And this does not include the ones that came in today, which I didn't have time to look at. I was up till 5 o'clock this morning, reading material and trying to organize my thoughts and come to my own conclusion. And I wanna go through what my thought process was after we hear the public comments.
Thank you very much. Any further counsel before I open up the floor? It's open for public comments, and I allow three minutes. Floor is open.
Dave, thank you.
I've been to quite a few of these meetings up and down the lagoon over the last many months. And this meeting...
Dave, if you would, please. I need your name, ma'am, where you're from.
Obviously, I haven't been to enough of these meetings. I'm Dave Bato, Indian, Harbor Beach. I serve as a volunteer on the Board of the Marine Resources Council and chair the Fisheries Campaign. In all these meetings I've been to, this one reinforces it even more. Anybody believes that political leadership in a small town is an easy ride is wrong. It's not an easy ride. I'm not gonna go over a lot of data that you've already read and researched and know about. There was a recent workshop on this issue held by the County Commission. If you didn't attend, I hope you've had a chance to review the video on their site. Some real authorities gave us some real good information. But let me just summarize what I think you need to know. Fertilizer is a major contributor to our pollutant problem. That's been recognized since the Florida Consumer Fertilizer Task Force presented their report in 2005. They recommended... They recommended a statewide ordinance to control it. The problem was, the ordinance was written and adopted, but it was so weakened and it's wording by special interests that it's pretty much ineffective. If you read it in terms or from the perspective of Joe homeowner, it's almost impossible to follow, because it's ambiguous, never gives specifics. This ordinance that you're looking at today is a good one. It clarifies, it codifies, and it is specific. It can be followed. You know the problem, 47,000 acres of our seagrass is gone. Do the math, two, maybe three years, that's 470 million fish that will not be in our waters. Our marine biologist tells us that one acre of healthy seagrass will produce 10,000 fish a year. The thing is, if you hear people saying, "We're doing it okay, you don't need to make a change," the obvious answer is, the status quo ain't working. It is not doing the job. We need to make some changes. This ordinance is a simple, almost no-cost educational and motivational tool that has been proven to work dramatically on the west coast of our state, Tampa Bay, Sarasota Bay, and on down all the way to Naples, and they're showing dramatic improvements. 600 acres of seagrass a year and fish to follow. Number two, some of the unintended consequences that you'll hear about have not shown up there. Enforcement has not been a problem. Pinellas County has the strongest ordinance in the state. It includes a ban on the sale of nutrient fertilizer during the summer. They have had no problem enforcing that. No neighbor calling out neighbor, no fertilizer police running around in people's yards, not a problem. The lawn maintenance industry over there is thriving. A major lawn maintenance company just hired 200 extra employees in St. Petersburg to handle their extra business.
Thank you, sir. Sorry, three minutes left. I appreciate your comments and your time. Thank you. Public comment? Thank you.
I'm Al Vasquez, a city resident of Satellite Beach for 25 years. I strongly support this ordinance, as I've commented before, and I really appreciate the work that I know all of you have put into researching the facts. This is a situation where, based on the science, we know that the right answer is no fertilizer, stop lawn clipping, stop everything. But in order to get there, that sort of ban would probably not be the most effective way to get there as quickly as possible. This sort of ordinance is the best way to get there as quickly as possible. It's modest, it's clear, the prohibited time periods are easy to follow. It makes a lot of sense, and I support it. Before I forget, I did want to suggest just a couple of changes to clarify the language for you to consider. On page four, the definition of landscape plant, landscape plant means any native or exotic tree. You could just delete native or exotic, it's redundant, that means all trees. On page six, the, under Section 26-112, Application Practices, I think I mentioned this last time, the reference to a spreader, that's Section A, is redundant. I think you could delete it. It's an issue of, I think it's always wrong to specify a technology in law, as I'm saying, you know, all computers have to have at least six vacuum tubes. You know, we don't know what's coming, so specifying deflectors is unnecessary. The statute, the ordinance already covers, don't put it on impervious surfaces, don't put it near waterways, you've got that covered. I think they've done an outstanding job. P&amp;Z has done an outstanding job on this ordinance. You've done a lot of work on it, I hope you can pass it tonight and feel good knowing that you've done something that's going to have a long-term benefit to the city and a long-term benefit to Florida by example of Satellite Beach. Thank you.
Thank you. Floor still open?
My name is Michael Offord, I'm a resident of Melbourne. I'm here to represent the industry. I've been doing this for about six years, fertilizing lawns. Not a scientist, so I have never researched, but I've seen the effects of what I've done, and I know how to apply things correctly. And I think the state has given us a model that is perfect, that fits what we're looking for. The stricter ordinance, I just have a couple issues with it, is first, the 50% slow release, you know, gives the thought of, the fertilizer's going to slowly release, and the grass is going to take it up as it slowly releases. Well, you're going to be putting it down when the grass isn't growing actively, or growing at its highest, or its most, if you will. So, yeah, it's going to release it, but if the grass doesn't need it, then it's just going to dump it out, you know, it's just going to go where we don't want it to go, into these waterways, which obviously, science has proven that there's very little leaching done with nitrogen, but that's, like I said, I'm not a scientist, I'm just here to tell you what I've done. And then, the blackout period, that's the most that the grass grows. And the best way I can put this into perspective is, I have a four-year-old son, and about six months ago, he was eating a little, and I thought maybe he was starving, but he just wouldn't eat that much. And I was like, "Come on, kid, you got to eat more, you know, you're a growing boy." Well, these last two months, I mean, he just won't stop eating. And that's because, you know, our doctor told us, "Well, he's not growing, so he's not going to need as much food." But these last couple of months, he's starting to have a growth spurt, so he's going to need more food. Now, your grass needs more food during that blackout period, and by restricting the nitrogen and putting it down in a period where it doesn't need it as much, you're defeating the purpose of a healthy turf grass, which is proven to be the best filtering device for our waterways. So, I think the state has done a good job. They've given us a model to follow. The stricter ordinance really goes against what we're trying to accomplish with less fertilizer. You know, I heard a scientist from Florida say that the best blackout period would be during the winter time. Now, I don't prefer a blackout period, because I think you can feed the grass throughout the year here in Florida, we don't really get cold enough in this area, but that's what I would like for you to consider. Fertilize the grass when you need it the most, and that's during the blackout period that's proposed. And the 50% slow release, it sounds good on paper, but in reality, it's just not going to do what we all feel like it's going to do. Quick releases is just as well, works just as good, and you don't have as much leaching. All right?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Hi, Linda Barrett from Biara, and also from the Sierra Club. I just wanted to say briefly that both as a Sierra Club person and for myself as a resident of Brevard County, I want to thank you folks, staff, city manager, city attorney, and you folks on the council for doing your homework and coming up with such an excellent ordinance that will help bring the Indian River Lagoon back to its form of glory, hopefully, certainly help it from falling apart any further than it already has. This is an excellent, strong ordinance, it has everything it should have. I love that the, what we always used to call the restricted period is now prohibited period from June 1st to September 30th, as it should be. And frankly, if you put that 50% or more slow release down in April or May, it's going to carry through with enough nitrogen and nutrients for the grass coming from that slow release that's already in your ground and won't run off, because you've put it down during the summer, and all of a sudden, in the afternoon, you've got two inches of rain after you put it down that morning. That's the way to go. It's working beautifully on the west coast of Florida. And there was a study in 2009, Dr. John Cusar did a blackout study, and it showed that the grass can do beautifully without nitrogen during the summer. I know that from personal experience, because this summer, I told my lawn service not to put down any nitrogen, and my grass looked fine. My homeowners association didn't even complain, and believe me, they're the first to complain about anything. So, again, thank you very much. This is an excellent ordinance, it addresses everything it needs to and says everything it needs to. Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all for being here tonight. My name is Jack Quirk, I live at 720 Palm Drive here in Satellite Beach. I'm a relatively, a new person here in Satellite Beach, although I was here in this area about 30 years ago. And I know that the river has changed in 30 years dramatically, and very disturbingly. The reason I bought here was because it had both the ocean and the river, and I really liked that, that was really important to me. I'm here from Maine, and in Maine, I lived on water too, and I was the person who did the water quality checks. I did dissolved oxygen readings, as well as seki disc readings to look at water clarity in one of our ponds. The reason I got involved in that, and I did it for 15 years, was because about 20 years ago, there's a place up there called China Lake, I don't know if you've all heard of it. China Lake was one of the finest fisheries in the state of Maine, it had the best trout and the best salmon. Because of various pollutants and runoff into that lake, the lake wound up turning green. In other words, the thing that's happening to the river, it turned green, it became a very mossy, nasty place. The only way they were able to do anything with China Lake was they had to kill the lake. They had to kill the lake, they had to poison it. That poisoned everything in the lake. It took them years to bring it back, and millions and millions of dollars. What I would suggest to you tonight is, you have to keep in mind that we're certainly going to be talking about what's going to happen over the next few days, but the things that are going to happen to that river over the next 10 years are going to be very, very important for the economy of this area and the property values of this area. And I think you really have to take a long-term view and understand the significance of the dollars that are involved, and I really hope that you follow through on the recommendations you have in front of you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any further comments?
My name's Michael Zeno, 983 Castile Road, Plumb Bay, Florida. I'd like to thank you for letting us all speak today. I support the state model DEP as it stands, without any further restrictions. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
My name is Spence Garin from Melbourne. I too support the ordinance that you are considering passing here tonight. I think if I were in the landscaping and maintenance business, I would investigate what's going on over on the west coast, instead of trying to stop us from taking minimal action here to try to do something about the really bad situation we are in. Basically, it's a choice between, do we save seagrasses in the lagoon, or do we save sodgrass lawns? That's what the choice amounts to, basically. I hope you do the right thing. This is, as has been said many times, this is the low-hanging fruit. If we can't do this one, we can't do anything. Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you, counsel. My name is John Gagnon, I'm from Malabar, Florida. I was here at your last meeting, and I'm sure I'll be a little nicer this time. I think it's no doubt that everybody in this room is here getting up and talking because we do care about the environment. In our company, the one, number-one thing that everyone has to learn before they can even work for us is that we are committed to helping people enjoy life and wellness. If you can't remember that in our company, you don't work for us. Number two, there are a lot of things going into this river. It's not just phosphorus, it's not just fertilizer. And I had this discussion before, if you take your boats out on a not-sunny day, in the rain, and go to the banks and see what's going into this river for real, I think your eyes would be opened. It opened my kids' eyes, okay? It's not clear water flowing into that river, there are a lot of things in there. Now, of course, the fertilizing companies and the companies that go out there and work the hardest and try to do everything by the letter of the law, they're the easiest to regulate, because guess what? We're already regulated. We can take the easy way out, and that's what this is. I've gone to town, to town, to town, I went to my own town of Malabar, and I heard the same things. It's easy, we don't have to work hard. We just come up with an ordinance, we ban fertilizers, and gosh, everybody leaves us alone for a little while. But that's not the solution. It goes well beyond what we're doing here tonight. Is it a first step? Yes, and I'll admit that to everyone. But it doesn't stop here. Someone has to get their socks and shoes off and get into the water and start finding out the truth. And the truth is, go out there on a rainy day and look at the bank, and look at some of them pipes that are spilling out, and we don't know where they go. Because I know we had a few in Malabar, and now they're not there no more. So, let's go out there and take a look at what's actually spilling. And we can take the easy way out, and we can stop here tonight, and it all feels great, because it's all about feelings, isn't it? Bottom line, it's about a feeling. And, bottom line is, I would feel better knowing that we're going to pursue this to what the real causes are than to just take the easy and cheap way out, because it costs you nothing to regulate the over-regulated right now. Thank you.
I have one in the back first.
Dale Abrams, resident of Satellite Beach. Exemptions. Who is exempt from this? Can anyone answer that?
It's in the section on...
So, it's ballparks, football fields, the city hall, parks...
Farm operations, lands used for scientific research. I know, it's all in here.
So, ballparks...
City hall is not in there.
Okay. The parks, are parks...
Athletic fields at public parks and school facilities that apply the concepts and principles embodied in the Florida Green, BMPs, while maintaining the health and function of their specialized turf areas.
Okay. All right.
That there's no government buildings that are included in that, unless it's athletic field at public parks and school facilities.
Okay. What does this do to jobs pertaining to the people that fertilize and spray lawns? Does this have any impact on that? I mean, I care about the lagoon too, but I have to agree with the gentleman that was just up here. I've been out on the river, and I have seen some pipes coming from, I don't know where, with water coming out of it. So, there are other parts to this river thing besides fertilizer, okay? No one seems to have brought up insecticide, so I guess it's okay for us to use insecticide. I haven't heard anything about insecticide. The other question is, who's going to police this? Are we going to have the fertilizer police out there checking? And what happens with those people that use organic material? Are they affected by this?
Good evening. My name is Steve Conrath, I've been a Melbourne resident for 15 years and a lawn care professional for 23 years. I'm with Scott's Lawn Service, and I'm helping protect the Indian River Lagoon by managing our Satellite Beach lawns according to the model ordinance. The model ordinance is working, and we should expect it to. It was developed by a broad group of experts, environmental groups, state agencies, water management districts, and university researchers. It is a comprehensive ordinance that has proven successful in the cities and counties that have endorsed it. The proposed changes regarding summertime fertilizer restrictions are simply not based on science, and likely won't produce any meaningful results. Lawn fertilizers are a very minor source of nutrients coming into the waterways, which the model ordinance adopted last year has already addressed. Please make a fact... Please make a fact-based decision based on science and keep the current state model ordinance in place. It's working, and banning the use of lawn fertilizers in the summer could actually have the opposite effect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, council. My name is David Laster. I reside in Palm Bay. I was born in Rockledge, grew up in Brevard County. I was at the last meeting and felt then and feel now that I've been speaking on deaf ears. Understanding all the scenarios in place, okay, and looking at the full wide picture of passing anything other than the model ordinance, which makes perfect scientific sense, using products when they need to be used, not using products when they don't need to be used. It just makes common sense, not to mention scientific-proven sense. The situation that you're going to deal with is you can regulate the professionals who are trained, licensed, follow the state, federal regulations, and do their job right because we're monitored to make sure we do our job right. We double-check our product expenses. We know if there's over-application, it's controlled immediately. We know how much we've got to apply per thousand square feet to make it correct. We know if the lawn's healthy, it's good to use the products. And fertilizing the right time of year keeps the lawn healthy, keeps it thick, prevents soil erosion, which can prevent or which can cause, needless to say, a whole other problem. By passing this restricted ordinance, you will restrict us, which is okay. We can go with the flow. We've got enough scientific backing to make things work in give or take. Not as good as the model ordinance allows us to do it now. We will certainly strive to change our programs to do what we need to do to meet the regulations. But the people it's going to affect is the professionals, and unfortunately, professionals' customers, not so much the layman that's doing his own fertilization. You're going to tell me you're going to go down to Lowe's, Home Depot, and make them quit selling fertilizers? Boy, that's going to be a big bite to chew. Big bite to chew for a small area to enforce large outfits like that. I stand behind the professionals in this industry after 32 years of being in this industry and seeing the changes in this industry toward better. And I stand behind the ordinance, the way it stands, the model ordinance, the way it stands. It works. It's proven to work, and it's scientifically sensible. Thank you.
John Fergus, 135 Maple. I also spoke to the PNC. Dr. Gilmore at the workshop on the lagoon made a comment. He's worked on the lagoon for over 30 years. He supports the summer ban on fertilizer. If you want science, he's probably the best you can get. I did some work myself. Folks did send people copies of studies, and I found it interesting. I used a couple of studies by IFIS, who are the godfather of the sod people at UF. And they did some work for FDEP. And what they were doing was fertilizing sod to maintain it during the wet season. They applied the amount of fertilizer which IFIS recommends, half a pound to a pound per thousand square feet, da-da-da-da. And their numbers showed that using the fast-release, the urea-based fertilizer, 30% plus, I don't remember the number, went into the water table. If they use the slow-release only, and I use that in quotes, 13% went into the water table. I ran some quick numbers on, you know, we've got about 5,000 homes, 4,500 homes in the city, single-family, fifth of an acre lot, 50% lawn coverage, that kind of thing. And what I came up with was a rough estimate that if everybody applied this fertilizer the way they're supposed to by IFIS, it will only cost the city $75 million to remediate the problem. Earlier this week, I saw a new technology which is being used out of one of the big lakes on the St. John. It's been being used for four years. If we were to use that technology, would, again, quote, "only," cost us a million dollars a year to remediate the amount of stuff that's being dumped on the lawns? If everybody did it. Now, I know not everybody's doing it. I also know some people are over-fertilizing, but it's the best number I can get. The point is, the science says it's a problem. This is low-hanging fruit. It will not clean up the river. We all know that. There's a lot of things we have to deal with. But this is a start, a little baby step on a very long trip. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Kate Fine, Satellite Beach resident. Mr. Chairman came to Satellite Beach in 1968. Other than three years, I've lived here since then. O'Gallie Causeway is a jaw bridge. I-92, 192 was two lanes. Did not have the pollution we have now. We have lots of pollution going through rivers. To cut it short, we already have a west coast model that said what you are proposing is working. I don't see any reason why we can't go forward with this. You, more than I think most people in here, know what changes have taken place in the last 30 years or so. My only suggestion is that we don't stop here. We're going one step further or many steps further and continue to find ways to get rid of the pollution and bring back our environment. Thank you.
Thank you. Further comments? Yes, ma'am. And then the gentleman in the back. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. I'm Carol Hamilton, 522 Carmel Drive in Melbourne. Although I don't live in Satellite Beach, I have always admired what you and others before you have done to preserve the land along A1A, along the ocean. This is a wonderful, a wonderful town of Satellite Beach. You are to be admired. Now, we're asking you to help the Indian River Lagoon survive. We're asking you to step forward with stricter fertilizer ordinance. For the past seven years, I have voluntarily put a ban of having fertilizer applied to my lawn during the summer for the past seven years. And I've got pictures to show you what my lawn looks like. These pictures were taken August 21st of this year, and they have not been retouched in any way. So from June 1st through October 1st, no fertilizer is applied that can run off my lawn into the lovely lake behind my home. When my lawn service technician applies the fertilizer in October, no extra fertilizer is piled on, as I've read in some articles. My lawn is green, thick, and it is beautiful. The reason why I did this in the first place, because I noticed I was getting algae in the lake behind my home. So I did this voluntary ban for seven years, and the algae is gone. If you apply your own fertilizer, people can also save time and money by doing a summer ban. And I would like to, first of all, I have the receipts here for seven years showing that I have asked my fertilizer company to do no fertilizing during the summer months. And I want to pass along the pictures. I'd like to have you look at them. This is taken on August 21st with no touching. This shows the lake behind the home. And my property borders right up to the water. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Just one more. Gentleman in the back.
Good evening. My name is Mike Garrist. I'm with Ecor Lawn Spray and Pest Control. We're a small company in the area in Brevard County, servicing just Brevard County. We're not one of the large national chains. We service probably about 400 of your constituents here in Satellite Beach. There are other companies that service more, some service less, but quite a few of your constituents do get lawn service to some extent. As some of the others have come up here and stated, we support the model ordinance. We're not here to apply more fertilizer than is necessary. It impacts our bottom line and simply isn't necessary in most cases. What may be of impact in the summertime, especially on the beach side, grubs are a big issue. They can damage grass. If we don't have the ability to apply fertilizer to regenerate growth, sod replacement may be necessary in some instances. Grubs start feeding anytime from about probably August, September on through into the fall. So fertilizer is important, keeping the grass strong, keeping the root system strong, and helping regenerate that growth. There was some mention made about the west coast models. 2013, there was the highest number of manatee deaths because of red tide blooms on the west coast. I don't know if that's been brought up, but I'm not sure if the west coast models have been working as well as some of indicated. Please support the state law model ordinance.
Thank you very much. Further comment? Hearing none.
Good evening. I'm Linda Chansey, and I live in Melbourne. And I am here to encourage you to stick with the stricter ordinance. I've heard a lot of people speaking about it's not just fertilizer, but it's one of the elements. So we just need to remember, it is going to take a whole constellation of things, but the lagoon is definitely is not healthy. We're not, tourism is probably our biggest draw to the county. And we just don't, I mean, I already talked to a couple of friends who don't come back here to fish because they were here a couple of years ago. There's no more fish. They don't come down this spring. There's news over in England that says, "Don't come to Brevard County." Now, I don't know how they found out about it, but they're saying, "Don't bother to come here because the lagoon is dying." So we have to do something that is going to help bring that back, and it's going to keep the fisheries. And so it's just a matter of everybody working together. We are aware that stormwater is a big problem. We are aware that septic tanks are a big problem. And I think all of those departments are also working on that as well. So it's not as though we're just picking one specific area. So I would just encourage you to stick with that, and let's just try to move forward and start cleaning it up.
Thank you very much. Any further comment?
Mary Spar, Koko. I'll be very brief because I talked last time. I'd like to thank you for considering all the scientific information, all the other information you were given. I know this is a tough decision, and it really requires leadership. If you pass, as I hope you will, the ordinance in front of you, the strong one, you will become the second municipality in Brevard County to do so. I think the ordinance is very well-written, and I urge you to take that step and show the leadership of Satellite Beach.
Thank you. Further comments? Hearing none. Bring it back to council. Who would like to start?
As I said, I was up 5:00 this morning reading these materials, and as I went through them and came to the conclusion of them, my head was just sort of swimming. And I sat down at the computer and started to gather my thoughts. And what I wanted to do was to come up with a summary of what the issues are out there and how they are being treated, so that I could work my way to my conclusion as to what I wanted to do on this ordinance. So I'd like to go over those with you. And I started out by saying, first of all, the state has mandated a fertilizer ordinance by 2014, along with significant TMDL mandates to reduce nutrient loads in the lagoon. So we must take action. We've been working from three possible ordinances. First one is DEP's model ordinance. And both FDEP and the Department of Agriculture and Consumer Services, they both recommend that we adopt this model ordinance, not surprisingly, although Florida law does allow local governments to enact more stringent requirements. The second ordinance we've been dealing with is Brevard County's modified version of the DEP model. And what is before us tonight is our Planning and Zoning Board's twice-recommended version, which further restricts the Brevard County ordinance. Our Planning and Zoning Board's most controversial recommendations appear to be the summer ban and the requirement for at least 50% slow-release nitrogen in fertilizer. The proposed ordinance that we're looking at tonight has two opposing viewpoints coming generally from two groups. The first group is those whose sole objective is to preserve the Indian River Lagoon. They favor the strongest possible ordinance, and they want all impacted jurisdictions to pass ordinances with consistent provisions. And the other group is the professional lawn care or turf grass industry, whose members believe that their BMPs help protect the lagoon and who understandably also hope to protect their livelihood. They favor the less restrictive model ordinance from DEP. Both groups believe that science is on their side, and sometimes they even cite studies from the same source, for instance, IFIS from the University of Florida. The environmentalists cite before and after studies showing positive impacts after a strong fertilizer ordinance is enacted in terms of nitrogen and phosphorus levels in a water body, decreased cost for the industry, and improved turf health and appearance. The lawn care turf grass industry states that the most crucial time to fertilize is during the summer growing season in order, among other things, to create dense turf grass which prevents erosion and nutrient runoff. Some in the industry put it more bluntly, "My business will suffer. Please protect my livelihood." But the industry is not unconcerned about the environment. In fact, at the bottom of one of the emails I received, the gentleman wrote, "Please consider the environment before printing this email." Ultimately, the comments that I found most persuasive came from Dr. Lisa Suto at the Marine Resources Council who made these points. DEP's model ordinance merely reinforces the status quo. It does nothing to change the inputs of nutrients reaching the lagoon. The more restrictive provisions recommended by our Planning and Zoning Board The more restrictive provisions recommended by our Planning and Zoning Board have already been adopted by over 50 local governments in Florida, including several along the Indian River Lagoon. In Sarasota County, where the restrictive provisions have been in effect since 2007, the lawns are still healthy and the industry has adapted. It appears there is nothing to lose by adopting the restrictive provisions. We know that there are multiple causes of pollution, nitrogen, phosphorus in the lagoon, things such as air pollution, sewage from leaking septic tanks, fertilizer and stormwater runoff, and other things. No one ordinance can address them all. But the fact that we can't tackle all of the problems doesn't mean that we shouldn't tackle one of them when we have the opportunity. And so I'm prepared to do that by supporting ordinance 1074.
Thank you. Further comment from council? Who would like to start?
I'm a business owner and it's easy for me and my business to, if I want to do something different tomorrow, I can just do it. But for those of you who have been coming to these meetings and come to other meetings, government doesn't work that way. Government works real slow. I went to my first environmental quality meeting with the League of Cities in 2004 and in 2003 I was appointed to that board. We were talking about this issue in 2002, 2003, 2004, and it's taken us, it's 2013, and this has finally arrived where we have a state model ordinance. It's taken this long for us to get here. And this is not us just all of a sudden jumping on the bandwagon and saying, "We're going to do this." Satellite Beach has spent millions of dollars for stormwater runoff in our city. TMDLs was an issue back in the 2003, 2004 timeframe with the Environmental Quality Board. We knew these things were coming down the pipe. We've been proactive in our city in doing things with stormwater, but we're not there. And as John Fergus noted, the TMDL standards are getting more and more stricter. The improvements that we've made in Satellite Beach aren't going to be the improvements that are going to be standing for the next 20 years. We're going to have to make more improvements. I go out on the water. I see the stuff that's running in, you know, the pipes. I'm out on waterfront lots because I have a swimming pool service business. So I see the water. I support this stricter ordinance because I see this as it's an opportunity for us to start doing the things that we need to do in our city and we need to do along the Indian River. And it's not just fertilizer. It's stormwater. It's septic tanks. We don't have septic tanks in Satellite Beach with the exception of one street, which we're going to be taking care of those hopefully in the near future. But the county does. And they're going to have to come up and figure out how they're going to handle these things. But these are major contributors to what's going on in the lagoon. And this is just one element that I believe we can tackle in Satellite Beach. The same way that we've always been proactive in Satellite Beach, we didn't develop Sampson's Island. Sampson's Island could have been another Lansing Island or Tortoise Island, but the residents of this city chose to make it a passive recreation island. It's 52 acres with no fertilizer, no pesticides, no nothing. We've been contributing to the Indian River Lagoon's positive things for a long time in Satellite Beach, and this is just another opportunity. So I'm going to support the ordinance.
Thank you. Further comment?
Yeah, one of the things that I've learned over the years being in Satellite Beach is that we have our boards and we, in this case, went back to our board for a second time to take another look at this to see exactly what they believe the pulse of the city of Satellite Beach was. And I've always relied very heavily on our boards and their feedback as to what we should do with council. And I'll just read this here in our packet. It says, "After public comment and after much discussion unanimously reaffirmed their original recommendations made on 3/18/13." So again, I know I have always relied on our boards for the input and for their intellect and for the people that we appoint to those boards to help us guide those decisions. So I feel as though, in this case, as I do many, many times, I'm going to support the board that worked hard on this. So I do support ordinance number 1074.
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
I have a question. We never really addressed enforcement. I mean, obviously, the industry, they're a billboard. They're going to be ding-ride-o-out, but what about the homeowner who's spewing fertilizer into the canals and onto the sidewalks? How is that going to be enforced? Because they're part of, they're actually a lot of the problem. Realistically, from what I'm hearing, probably the majority of the problem.
I mean, it would just be like any other part of our code. If we receive a complaint, we'll go out and if we can observe it, then we'll enforce the code. And so it'd be just like any other part of our code.
And I think, and we had a long discussion last night, I'm not opposed to a fertilizer ordinance. I know there's issues with the Indian River Lagoon, but I am opposed to the more stringent ordinance. I think the model ordinance is fine. It can be amended later. I'm not finding the scientific data to support that it should be done any differently. I did actually get the Planning and Zoning Package and the package weighed heavily towards providing all of the emails in support of the more restrictive ordinance and it didn't include a lot of the emails from the industry and others that supported the model ordinance. And just FYI, and you can confirm this, or Alan, there are two septic systems that are on city-owned property, one at Hedgecock and one at the Library Field, correct?
Yes.
Just wanted to make that note.
Put it back there.
Thank you. Thank you. A lot went into this.
Can I just confirm? When we published the agenda, we provided you with all the emails we received, regardless of who sent them or what side it was on. I just want to make sure that's clear.
Yeah, I would like to address that because that is absolutely incorrect. We provided the Planning and Zoning Board with all information that was provided to us, as well as put all of the information on the website to make sure they can make their own decisions.
Thank you very much. What's interesting about this is probably not too many people in the room that spends more time out there than I do. So when I hear people talk about water quality and so forth, it hits home. A friend of mine told me, who was a big environmentalist in this country, his name's Yvonne Shinard. He owns a little company called Patagonia. And he says, "And until we as a country realize we're the problem, we're not going to fix very much." And we are the problem because as you look at this area, and I lived here for 57 years, the water was different. There was a lot less people then. And I had the opportunity to fly in a helicopter and it opened my eyes. And when you see stormwater, and I grant you fertilizer is not the only problem, but runoff, which has fertilizer in it, is a major contributor to the health of this lagoon. And what was interesting in the helicopter was when you saw an outflow, you didn't see seagrass. And when you went up to Mosquita Lagoon, which is about as natural as we're going to have a place in this area on Merritt Island National Wildlife, there's no better water quality than is up there. And what are we eliminating? Humans. And, you know, I think that it's time, and I can tell you, I have done the research and the research is definitely out there, that this is something that everybody can benefit from. And again, I am a supporter of it because I have seen it work. I've seen what Tampa Bay looks like and I've seen other areas that have, you know, put this to use. And I haven't seen the negative. And at some point, it all affects all of us. And I apologize that it affects, you know, the industry, the fertilizer industry, but I also look at Mother Earth and go, "We are the problem. We don't take a step to try to make it better." And this is not something that's 2013. I think you can go back and if my memory, old memory, around 1992, there was an article in Florida Today, how the lagoon was dying. It's 2013 and it's still dying and we've done very little in that timeframe. And if you went back into the 70s, there was people talking about it then. So, you know, it seems like in our country, we always wait till things become a catastrophe before we do something. And I think this gives us an opportunity to do something. So I see a benefit to it and it's a long-term benefit. And hopefully, we all can live with it and the different businesses can figure out their solutions on how to survive during those time frames. Because Mother Earth isn't going to survive if we don't take some drastic steps or steps that make it better.
Further comment?
We adopt ordinance 1074 as amended on second reading.
I second it. Are we going to eliminate, look at the suggestions that Al made?
Yeah. On the technology part.
On the landscape, eliminate the words native and exotic.
I was going to refrain from further nitpicking, Al. I agree with the native or exotic thing. I forget where it is.
It's on page four. And all he's looking at doing is eliminating the word native and exotic and just leaving traditional ground cover.
Okay, you want to do that? Okay, well then, let's further.
Wait, 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 wait. What about the technology part that he brought out?
Well, we're doing this one at a time here.
Okay. Do it one at a time.
Under the definitions for, this for landscape plant, eliminate the words native or exotic and have it just read any tree, shrub, et cetera.
The other one was on page six, section 26112A, spreaders. Is that right?
Yeah, it was that. I.
I didn't really understand what.
I didn't either. So that's why I'm going to devon lawn.
Okay.
Do I have a motion?
You got half.
You've got a motion. I have a second.
I have a motion by councilwoman, God, a second by Councilman Montanaro. Further discussion from council? Hearing none. One more?
Councilwoman Deacon?
No.
Vice Mayor Palmer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montanaro?
Yes.
Councilwoman God?
Yes.
Or Deana?
Yes, motion carries four to one. Staff, thank you very much for your help and thank the council board for all they did on this. Thank you very much. We'll do it.
Stay hot in here. Oh, it's just hot. Can you crank that air down a little bit?
What?
Crank the air down a little? Jeff, can you crank the air down a little, please?
I was interested.
You can't, it's late. Yeah, it's hot up here.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to agenda item 13, discuss, take action on ordinance number 1080. Jim?
Ordinance number 1080, an ordinance of the city of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, amending appropriation of funds for the fiscal year 2012-2013 budget, ordinance number 1061. Said ordinance was previously amended by ordinance number 1070. Providing an effective date is the first reading of ordinance number 1080.
Thank you. Andy?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. This evening, you're here to adopt the year-end budget amendment, which is required by Florida statute. It pretty much just trues up where we're at, at year-end. I've got a very brief presentation that I'll go over and then answer any questions that the council mayor may not have. The, if you'll switch to the next slide, Christine. The purposes I've said before is there is going to change in projected revenues and expenses. As you know, the budget is just that, just simply a budget. Florida Statute 166241 allows governing bodies to amend the budget of each municipality at any time within a fiscal year within 60 days following the end of the fiscal year. So we adopted our fiscal year ended September 30th, so we've got 60 days. And being that it's an ordinance requires two readings, we'll be within that timeframe. And then the budget amendment must be adopted in the same manner as the budget was adopted. Therefore, we adopted our year-end budget amendment by ordinance. If you look at the packet that I give you, exhibit A referenced what we tried to do this year is keep our, anything to do with the budget in the same format as the budget. So budget amendment, mid-year budget amendments, the budget itself will be sort of in a similar format. In years past, we've listed all the various accounts in ordinance, the four or five-page ordinance and the actual ordinance. Picture, we just attached an exhibit from the budget. A, it's simpler and B, it's, I think it's more detailed for the council members. So if you see, it's kind of small here, but the far left-hand column there is, this is the police department's budget, for example. The numbers there on the left-hand side where the numbers begin is the adopted budget for fiscal year 1213. The next column, you'll see the mid-year. That's where we came in and we adopted a new budget mid-year. And then the final budget, these numbers are relatively accurate. They're based off, most of the majority of the numbers are in our accounting system. But we do have several invoices, smaller ones that may come in. So there's been a little leniency in your final budget numbers. When the audit, auditors come in, they'll audit the actual, they'll audit the actual numbers that we have in our system. For the most part, this final budget is relatively close to where the city ended up at year-end. And then you'll see on the right-hand side, we've just amended the budget. The difference between where we finished and where we projected to finish and where we made our budget amendment mid-year, that difference is what we're amending the budget to. So our revenues will increase or decrease and that column is on the far right where you can see those amounts. Next slide. Basically, what we're here to do this evening is adjust our budget by the amounts shown on the screen above. There is one change that we did have and being that it's an ordinance, we'll show that on the final number on the second hearing. But the funds that experienced an increase in revenues, these are accounts that we've, you know, like I said before, we've seen an increase in the revenue side of things. The general fund has gone up by $509,000. The community services fund has increased revenues of $14,509. Stormwater utility fund, $33,676. And the law enforcement trust fund, $26,854. And the capital assets fund, $62,164. So those are the amounts that we're going to increase our budget from the mid-year point. Funds that experienced a decrease in revenues, the CRA fund experienced a $586,000 increase. When I went and looked at the budget that was adopted last year, I think there was really just a mistake made in budgeting. They budgeted to bring in, I believe, around $600,000 of revenues from fund balance and then with the same budget, offset that as an expense back to fund balance. So you either budget one or the other. So it was overstated by the amount of the budget amendment. So that's what the budget, year-end budget amendment for is to take care of anything that true up all your numbers to where you actually ended up. So I think that was more of a mistake. So next, the big picture, you know, we can go through each of these line items. The city departments, for the most part, every city department fell under budget for what was allocated to their department. They did a good job, I think, in holding to the bottom line and then staying within their budget. And it shows here with basically the big picture, what everybody wants to know is how much money do we have to put back in our fund balance? What was the surplus at year-end? Well, the surplus at year-end from the numbers, and it's going to be, I think it's going to be 50,000 or 60,000 more than this, but this is just a conservative number in case there are other expenses out there that will need to be accounted for in the last fiscal year. But the general fund reserve will be increased in excess of $425,000 for fiscal year 1213. Just to put this in comparison, what does this mean? It means, A, that yes, a large portion of that was the CRA transfer and the agreement that we have with the CRA to transfer money of about around $325,000, but the other $100,000 was for the city departments and the city manager staying within, and myself, staying within the, staying within their budgets. So the city was fiscally responsible to not spend more than it collected in revenues overall for fiscal year 1213. To put this in comparison, in 1112, the city, you know, expended $390 from fund balance. So they brought in money from basically their savings account or the bank to balance the budget. And that's kind of where we've gotten to a situation here, I think, over the past four or five years, to where we've continued to eat into that fund balance. This year, we're going to replenish that by quite a good amount of $425,000. So congratulations on that. You should be commended for that. And the year-end budget amendment is not the audited financial statements, as I said before, and should not be represented as such. However, it does provide a relatively close estimate to the actuals at year-end. We just added, the budget amendment, your expenses cannot be more than you're approved for. So we leave ourselves probably around $4,000 or $50,000 in all the departments for anything that may come in. So we're in compliance with the state law. But so that'll just increase that reserve amount. So that's a really conservative estimate. So I think the city will actually put more than that amount into their fund balance. So overall, the city has done a good job financially, I believe, and this budget amendment will become the final budget for the city. Go to the next slide. Kind of where we head from here quickly is we'll have the, we'll prepare financial statements. The auditor will come in and audit those statements. They'll present the audit in between January and March, probably more around February, I would imagine, but in between January and March. And the city finance department is going to continue to monitor, you know, the finances of the city and provide relevant information to our department heads so they know where they're at. Hopefully, the town councils, I'm sorry, the city council as well as we move forward. So it's very transparent and you know exactly where it is. where it is that we stand at any point in time. So, um, hopefully these new budget formats, you're going to get, see these every time that we give you something, so everybody can get to understand those, and it's not confusing to go from a budget to a budget amendment that's in a different format, it's going to be one format. So, uh, with that being said, we would, uh, recommend, and I'd like to thank Christine Fain too, she was, uh, I think this is good news for the city, and she was the one responsible for doing all the accruals and kind of finishing up this year end, so we could provide this report to the council, so. That being said, I'd like to, uh, staff would recommend approval of the year-end budget amendment for fiscal year twelve-thirteen.
Thank you, Andy and your staff, thank you very, very much for this, very easy to read, appreciate it. Courtney, thank you. Questions from council?
Yeah, first, I'd like to just say congratulations. I think, you know, all the departments did a good job of watching their budgets, if we came out with a hundred thousand dollars to deposit. You know, when I was looking through this thing, I, you know, there was, there's numbers that jump out at me, and I, I went back to actually the eleven-twelve budget, and I was looking at the electric on page four, and, you know, the actual for eleven-twelve was a hundred-and-seventy-one thousand dollars that we spent on electric, but yet, you know, when we budgeted for twelve-thirteen, um, we were at one-twenty-three, and the actual came out to one-seventy, it was like forty-seven, forty-six thousand, seven-hundred dollars different. I'm wondering, you know, those are kind of constants when you look at certain utility things. Can you shed some light on how that happens?
Yeah. There are some things in the, in the budget that were just under budgeted, and that was one of them. Um, I think another one was the retirement side for the fire department was like a hundred thousand dollar under budget. And then, so, so there were, we had to account for that. So, I think that also shows how good we did this year. And we came in, and, and we went through the audit with the leadership team, we basically said just subsist, don't do anything special, don't spend any money. You know, we, we have to save this year, um, and, and that's what they did, and that's what we all did.
So, on top of the hundred thousand that we really saved that went back in the reserves, we actually had almost a hundred-and-forty-seven thousand dollars that wasn't budgeted, that we ended up covering on top of.
And a reduction in revenue.
Okay. Thank you. Questions? From council?
My only thing I'd like to say is, Andy, what a nice addition you and Courtney and Christine, as always, have done for, for this effort, we, we really do appreciate it. And I know it's been your department heads as well that have rallied around this, but it's really, really kudos, nice job, guys, and thank you so much for making the difference you've made.
Any further questions before I open it to public comment? Okay, at this time, I'd like to open this Agenda Item to public comment. Hearing none, back to council.
I'll make a motion.
Before you do that. On, um, front page of the ordinance, um, it says Community Services Special Revenue Fund, the name of the fund is Community Services Fund, and down at the bottom, the name of the fund is actually Community Redevelopment Trust Fund, not agency.
I'll make a motion to.
And so, you need to, uh, change those, and also on this Community Services Fund, you need to make that change in Exhibit A also.
Before you make the motion, Jim, will you read ordinance number ten-eighty by title?
I already did.
Did, you did? I, I don't remember.
Okay, we'll, we'll change it by the second reading.
Okay. I don't remember it.
Sorry about that.
I don't, did you? Did I, I thought I went right to Andy.
Yeah, I don't remember it being.
I don't remember.
He read, he read it right from, he read it right from here.
He read it.
Yeah, you read it.
He did.
A while ago, getting late.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, Jim, I got you. Never listen to me again. I'm going to make a motion to approve ordinance number ten-eighty with the changes that were identified by Councilwoman Gott.
On first reading.
On first reading.
A motion by Councilman Montanaro, a second by Councilwoman Gott. Any further discussion? Counselor, hearing none, Lenore?
Medina?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gott?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montanaro?
Yes.
Vice Dino?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Staff, appreciate it. Moving on to Agenda Item number fourteen, discuss, take action on resolution nine-forty. Jim?
Resolution number nine-forty, a resolution of the City of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, recognizing the need for knowledge to address the health of the Indian River Lagoon ecosystem, supporting greater research within the Indian River Lagoon, and pledging the cooperation of the City of Satellite Beach in efforts to find solutions for restoring the health of the Indian River Lagoon, providing for an effective date. That's a reading of resolution number nine-forty.
Thank you very much. This comes out of the Space Coast League of Cities, and I, we went to each of the cities, um, Satellite Beach and Satellite Beach had a lot of input into this particular one, so.
Motion to.
Before you do that. On the third whereas, it's after the word seagrass, the verb should be have, plural, not has. And I also, on that same whereas, um, I've never heard it called the Banana River Lagoon. I think we just mean the Banana River.
They call, they're, actually, they're lagoons, they're not rivers.
Is the Banana River part of the Indian River Lagoon? No?
There's three bodies, mosquito, Indian River Lagoon, and Banana River Lagoon, they're, they're three different, separate bodies of water.
Then, John, we did all those grants wrong. Okay, then just make the change in the verb.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number nine-forty.
I'll second.
A motion by Vice Mayor Breimer, second by Councilman Montanaro. I'll open it up at this time for discussion. The floor. Hearing none, back to council, council discussion. Hearing none, Lenore?
Councilwoman Medina?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gott?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montanaro?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yeah.
Vice Dino?
Yes, motion carries five-nothing. Moving on to Agenda Item fifteen, discussion, take action on interlocal agreement between the members of the South Beach Coalition for Voting Representation on the Space Coast TPO. Councilwoman Gott?
Yes. The, um, on the cover sheet, it says that, um, the, the amendment in this has been to make the agreement more understandable, um, let's not correct the, uh, amendment, is to address the quorum issue for Satellite, uh, for South Beach's coalition meetings. And if you'll go to page. Go to page four, down at the bottom, paragraph three, the very last sentence under, uh, paragraph A, uh, has been added, "In addition, the remaining elected officials of each municipality shall be deemed alternate coalition representatives who may substitute as needed in the absence of their appointed representative at coalition meetings." Um, there, there have been difficulties in getting a quorum, um, and, um, so this allows for some substitution there that was not allowed before.
Any other changes?
That's it.
Okay, thank you. Council comments?
I'll make a motion to authorize the city manager to execute the agreement.
I have a motion by Councilman Montanaro, second by Vice Mayor Breimer, further discussion from council. Hearing none, open it up to the floor. Discussion on item, Agenda Item fifteen. Hearing none, bring it back to council, Lenore?
Councilwoman Medina?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gott?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montanaro?
Yes.
Vice Dino?
Yes. Motion carries five-nothing. Onto Agenda Item sixteen, discuss, take action on request for an attorney general opinion on dual office holding. Jim?
Uh, this is actually an agenda item requested by Councilwoman Medina.
Okay. I'm sorry, I thought Jim did, so I was going to have them report.
Actually, there was a supplemental package that was delivered on Monday, um, a couple meetings ago when we had board interviews, there was a question whether Linda, Linda Loiseau was holding a dual office, because she sits on a pension board and also wanted to be on our advisory board. I brought it to the city's attention that I think there might be a dual office holding issue with citizens holding a position on our fire, police pension board and general pension board. There are lots of attorney general opinions out there, and then email Jim mentioned that it's a complicated, um, issue, and not one of those attorney general opinions addresses that issue, so I'm requesting that we, um, request an attorney general opinion to determine if, in fact, that it's a dual office holding position issue.
Counsel, comments from council?
Yeah, we have, uh, an opinion from our city attorney on that, and he's concluded that there's not an issue, so I'm not, uh, inclined to, um, pursue in any AGO.
Jim, could you elaborate a little bit on the, and I don't have the package in front of me, I actually left it on my desk, on the Pritt Attorney General Opinion that you looked at, it specifically, I can't, I can't remember, I don't remember the number, but it specifically addressed a council person serving in an ex officio capacity, doesn't talk about a citizen, and then also, I requested that you contact the attorney to discuss that specific opinion, and I was just wondering if you did that.
Yes, I talked to him last week. Basically. There are no opinions specifically that address the situation that we have. The dual office holding question is generally one that specifically relates to a specific, facts on the ground, I guess, for lack of a better way of putting it, and then the, you know, you're left to divine the answer from whatever examples that are out there. Basically, well, let me just give you back what the background is right now for us. Our code provides that the two residents who are the, the council appointees on the police and fire, um, the, our code specifically states, "The two appointed members may also serve simultaneously as members of the General Employees Retirement Board of Trustees." And there's a similar cross-pollination provision in the general employees' pension plan, it's not identical because there's three council appointees. The opinion that related to, um, Naples, which is where Mr. Pritt, who Mr. Pritt represented at the time, he asked for the attorney general's opinion, had a provision that's, actually was completely different than the way ours is set up. And he indicated that when he submitted the opinion, he thought that there was nothing wrong with his, but I'm just saying structurally, our ordinance is completely different than what theirs is, or what theirs was. What the operative provision, of course, I can't find the language, the operative provision of their ordinance was that, um, the Board of Trustees of the City General Retirement System was to consist of seven members, and it said, "One member of the city council to be appointed by the city council, one resident of the city with pension experience," and just goes on with what the other provisions are. The code then provided that, notwithstanding any other section of the code, members of the Board of Trustees of the General Employees Retirement System shall be permitted to serve on any other board duly formed by the city. The difference is, is that there is just a general statement that these people can serve on other boards. Doesn't say what boards, doesn't talk about anything else, and what they talk about is what, that they serve ex officio duties, and what they look at is, is whether or not by virtue of you're holding one office, you hold another office, or you can hold another office. And the other portion of that analysis relates in the ex officio duties is whether or not the duties on one board are inconsistent with serving on the other board. I have not been provided any information that would indicate that serving on the police and fire pension board and the general employees' pension board are inconsistent. So, the issue is, is whether or not that you, you hold an office by virtue of holding another. And that's basically, and I'll just read you what the attorney general said, it says, "Well, as to the Naples ordinance," it says, "While, in this case, the Naples Code states that members of this board may serve on other boards formed by the city, I cannot conclude that such general language is sufficient to impose on such members the ex officio duties of serving on another board that constitutes an office for purposes of constitutional dual office holding provisions." As I indicated when we first started this, unlike the Naples provision, it just says that these people can serve on those boards, or on any other board, whereas our code specifically says that those council appointees can serve, can be appointed for both boards. I don't know that there's a, a dual office holding problem with respect to ours, and that's the basis for why I believe that to be the case.
So, in other words, we're just setting their, their general, ours is specific.
Correct.
Says what you can do.
Correct. That's, that's, that's the distinction that I see between our code and the code that Naples had that Mr. Pritt was looking at, is there was no specific cross-pollination or cross-reference, whatever word you want to use, as to both boards. We specifically provide for it.
But out of all the attorney general opinions, there's none specific.
Correct.
Correct.
Yeah, I mean, because.
And that's the only reason why I'm requesting it, and it may be just firming up the language to be more specific. They're not serving in an ex officio capacity. But it appears to me it's a dual office holding issue.
Well, it is an issue, but whether there's a problem, and I don't know that there's a problem, based, because of how our code is drafted.
Can I ask a question?
No.
These attorneys' opinions, there's millions of them out there, I mean, attorney generals' opinions.
A million, but there's a lot.
There's a lot of them, sorry. So, to me, if this was a problem, why isn't, or if it is, why isn't there any other opinions out there?
I can't, I, I can't.
You know what I'm saying, I mean, if, if it's not, then is it a problem? So, if it's not a problem, what are we trying to make, you know, I'm just saying, if it's not a problem, we feel comfortable with it, and it hasn't been brought up for an attorney's opinion, for all the other attorney's opinions that are out there, is it an issue? And to me, it looks like, if it was an issue, I think you'd be able to find more of them as attorney general's opinion.
They're, they're pretty specific.
But I, but, and that's, you know, that is what it is, is, I mean, they're going to be fat and driven, and, you know, each, each ordinance is written differently, and, I mean, Mr. Pritt indicated to me when I talked to him on the phone that they modified their ordinance after they got the opinion, but I went through and read the operative provisions that are in that opinion and what their code presently contains, and I can't figure out what he, and what they amended, so I don't know.
Well, one, one of the issues is, I mean, to get an opinion, it, it takes a few minutes. I mean, we spent time looking into the Loiseau issue, why not send it up there and get the opinion, in thirty days, you'll have the opinion, and if we need to modify the code, we need to modify the code to address it properly. It's a constitutional violation, this is, this is, this could be an issue.
So, you're saying it is?
Well, I, I, I believe there is an issue, and maybe the code needs to be cleared up, but I would like to have that opinion.
Which is the council?
I think we've got a solution looking for a problem.
I need a motion or consensus to ask him to do it.
I'm not in favor.
Well, we think I'll open up, uh, this Item sixteen for public comment. Hearing none, close it, back to council. Counselor, which is?
I mean, I think it was worthy of Jim's investigation, Cheryl, I just, I just don't think we need to go any further with it at this point.
So, here, no motion? Dies for lack of motion. Moving on to Agenda Item seventeen. Agenda items for next regular council meeting.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, we'll be recognizing some police department volunteer at the meeting, and we'll also be having a second reading for the Lanus and zoning amendment that you just completed for the first reading tonight. You'll have the second reading for your budget amendment, and you will also have, uh, a resolution on the recreation board fee increase, basically a, a recommendation to phase those in. You also have a first reading for the ordinance on the right-of-way vacation procedures we discussed this evening, um, and we'll probably tack on a couple more things by the time we get to that agenda, but we haven't figured out what those are going to be yet.
Okay. Thank you very much. Again, Mike, I state at most meetings, if there's any other agenda items that any council member would like to have on, please get with Courtney on the matter. would like to have on, please get with Courtney on the matter. Moving on to agenda number 18, appointments to boards.
Make a motion to approve Ken Farson to the board of adjustments as a new appointee with a term ending 11/6/2016.
As an alternate.
Second. I have a motion by Councilman Montanaro, second by Vice Mayor Breimer, to appoint Ken Farson to board of adjustments as an alternate. Any further comment from council? Here and none. Lenore?
Councilwoman Medina.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gott.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breimer.
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro.
Yes.
Mayor Cattino.
Yes, motion carries.
I'll make a motion to change the appointment from an alternate member to a regular member for Kay LaRue on the beautification board with a term ending 11/1/2015.
And Marty Hensley also.
And Marty Hensley to the recreation board as a reappointment as a regular member, term ending 12/1/2015. Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Montanaro, second by Vice Mayor Breimer. Any further discussion? Will you follow the council?
Medina.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gott.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breimer.
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro.
Yes.
Mayor Cattino.
Yes. One question real quick on the beautification board I sit on. I've had a conversation with Phil, who's on that board, and he's going to check with the members on it concerning the meeting time of that board, and if there's possibly another date in time where we can have it be a 7:00 o'clock board in the evening, because we lost a member on the board who I thought was a good member, because he can't make it at that time. And some of the history there was said that it was done because that's when Scotty could do it, and.
That's at 9:00 in the morning on a Friday.
9:00 on a Friday morning, so we cut the number of good people we could have out that can't, you know, make that. So I'm not saying it's going to happen, but I just want to let you know that I'm a liaison to it, that's what I ask. Moving on to agenda number 19.
Move to adopt, as submitted, the October 1 and October 2 workshop meetings minutes, and the October 2 and October 16 regular meeting minutes.
Second. I have a motion by Councilwoman Gott, second by Councilman Montanaro. Any further discussion? Here and none. Lenore?
Wait a second. Hold on, hold on. Yeah, on the, did we correct the, Courtney? On the October 2 regular city meeting, on your council comments, I didn't attend the code enforcement board meeting, because there wasn't one. I think I attended the recreation board meeting.
Right.
So that needs to be changed. I'm on page, I'm on the October 2 meeting, the beginning of your council comments, right here. I didn't attend the code enforcement meeting, it was a recreation board meeting.
Okay, amend, amend the motion to, for the, take the October 2 regular meeting minutes out of that motion, and we'll deal with it separately. Separately.
All right, I'll amend my second.
I have an amended motion by Councilwoman Gott, second by Councilman Montanaro. Any further discussion from council? Here and none. Lenore?
Councilwoman Medina.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breimer.
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gott.
Yes.
Mayor Cattino.
Yes, motion carries.
You said recreation board?
Yes.
Move to approve, as submitted, the minutes, no, move to approve the minutes of the October 2 regular meeting with the change of code enforcement board to recreation board under Councilman Montanaro's city council comments.
Thank you. Motion by Councilwoman Gott, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Breimer. Any further discussion? Here and none. Lenore?
Councilwoman Medina.
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breimer.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gott.
Yes.
Mayor Cattino.
Yes, motion carries. Any further business in front of council? Here and none. The ones are adjourned. Lenore?
See, we actually read these minutes.